All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us for tonight's Planning Commission meeting. As always, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll ask you all to rise and face the flag and join me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Venus, can we have roll call, please?
Chair Baldino.
Present.
Vice Chair Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Keldoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hessler.
I'm here.
And Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Okay, now is the time on the agenda for public communications. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Planning Commission on anything already not on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about the downtown plan, we'll have time for that later. Anyone wishing to make a comment? All right, seeing no one, I'll close public communications. Next is written communications, and we have email. Two emails, correct? Anything else besides that? Eduardo?
Yeah, actually, there's three emails that were distributed to the commission, one on each of the items. And other than that, there are no other written communications.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Okay, next is our consent calendar. I'll go ahead and pull item F2. Does anyone have any changes to those meeting minutes from 2015? Anyone go back and watch those meetings? I called Wingate, she said they were fine. Okay, if there are no additions, I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 27, 2015, and August 13.
Still move?
Can I get a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero. Okay, the item I pulled is a request for an expanded alcohol service at the Sauce, Barbecue, and Spirits Restaurant. Can we have a brief staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Jasmine, and I'll be presenting the item before you, which is for Sauce, Barbecue, and Spirits located at 2015 East Park Place. So the restaurant is currently replacing a former restaurant that contains two outdoor patios. The original AUP allowed for a Type 47 ABC license, and Sauce and Barbecue will continue to operate under an ABC 47 license. Sauce, Barbecue, and Spirits is not requesting to make any modifications to the hours of operations. And the applicant is currently proposing two new outdoor recreational areas located at the front of the restaurant. And they're actually requesting to serve alcohol and for alcohol consumption in those two areas. And the proposed areas are in additional amenity to the restaurant. As you could see, one of them is going to have a a bocce board court, and the other one is gonna be used for shuffleboard as well. There are no additional modifications being proposed to the other areas of the restaurant. The new outdoor recreational area will be used for games, and it's tailored to the customers who are waiting to be seated, as well as those who are visiting the restaurant. Court number one is gonna sit six people, and court number two is gonna sit four people. The proposed location is visible for both pedestrians and people who are driving by. The proposed modifications are not gonna create any new impacts that would not be normally associated with the operations of the restaurant. And it's going to continue to be consistent with the C4 commercial center zone. Staff has reviewed the proposed modification, and we are recommending for the Planning Commission to receive and file the Director's Decision to approve the AUP modification to allow the service of alcohol. And unfortunately, the customer was, the applicant, I should say, was unable to make the meeting. But he did provide a late public communication that you guys have before you, in which he expresses his excitement, basically, to be a part of a community. And any questions?
All right, thank you. So all we're doing is just expanding the alcohol license so that you can enjoy a drink while you're playing shuffleboard?
That is correct.
Okay. Or bocce?
Yeah.
All right.
So they can sell and consume there, or i- if we didn't do it, then they could still consume there? Is that, is it the selling or the consuming in that area that we're?
It's the consuming of the area and the service. Yeah, the service itself, so they're not really, they're not serving, they don't have a station to serve, but the
They can order things there.
Yeah, they can order at the bar and go there with their drinks and wait.
All right, any other questions? Okay, was that your first report?
It was.
You knocked it out of the park.
It's a good one.
Great job.
I'm shaking.
No, you did great. You did great. So I only pulled this because I just love when new businesses come to town. I wish this company the best of success. If it can't be here, I think it's great if people wanna play bocce and have a beer while they wait for their tables, and I wish them all the best. So with that, I will go ahead and move approval of the, well, it's just the receive and file, it's already been approved.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's been approved, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to receive and file. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is continued business. There is none. Next on our agenda, H3, we have a coastal permit on behalf of El Segundo Power LLC about the demolition of boiler units three and four at their plant. Can we have a staff report, please?
Of course, Chair, I'll have Maria Baldinegro present that, and this is a coastal permit hearing, so because we have our own local certified plan, we're able to issue our own coastal permits for anything in our coastal zone, so that's why this is before you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Plant Commission. The application is to request demolition of units three and four, now to
Okay. And ancillary equipment and structures. The site is located at 301 Vista Del Mar. It contains a generating station, there's tanks, roadways, and other equipment. There is a back path that runs along the western property line, and all demolition is going to take place and staging within the site. There's a controlled security gate, and the site is fully gated and fenced. In 2005, the applicant obtained approval to decommission units one and two, and they were demolished in 2010. And in 2011, the intake tunnels were removed, cooled the boiler units. In 2015, unit three and four were decommissioned, and in 2017, the intake was approved, and we granted the city, City's Plant Commission granted a coastal development permit. All demolition is going to happen within the site. They will loop around all the equipment. There's no activity that's gonna happen off-site. This is a view of the equipment that's going to be demolished, as seen from the ocean. The demolition activity will take place approximately 14 months. This is what the equipment looks like today, and once it's removed, the natural scenic view will be restored. The axonometric drawing shows how the project will be faced. They will start with unit three and then move to unit four. No impacts are proposed to the bike lane or the shoreline. This project requires a coastal development permit. The code has required fines, it listed in the slide. Staff believes that the two fines can be made because all work takes place within the site. The project involves the demolition of existing decommissioned structures that have been existing since 2000, since 1955. The, and no public access will be impeded to the shoreline or the ocean. During the notification period, the city did receive two comments, and the concerns are primarily with the noise and the impacts to air quality. Staff has assessed that the project will, together with the condition of approval, will not put at risk or cause any issues, and the adoption of the resolution with the condition of approval can be made. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution. The applicant is here to answer also any questions you may have.
Thank you, Maria. The noise and air quality, are those specific requirements in the resolution that you can point me to?
The noise has to do with abiding with our municipal code regarding noise and vibration. Trucks will not arrive at the site until 7:30. The noise ordinance does allow activity to begin at seven in the morning. All exiting of trucks will take place along Vista Del Mar, and they will make a left. They will not impact any of the residential communities to the south in Maham Beach. The comments that we got are from residents that's approximately 1,500 feet from the first and closest unit, which is unit four.
Okay, but in the resolution, do we refer to our municipal noise ordinance? It sounds like we're gonna treat it like a home construction.
We have two conditions.
Okay.
And I have
Yeah, I'm sorry, and just to clarify, you know, although the municipal code does allow for construction activity and demolition to start as early as 7:00 a.m., the conditions of approval have a 7:30 start. In addition to that, you'll see that construction vehicles will not be allowed to park or queue or idle before that 7:30 start time. And I think that's something we try to incorporate in as a condition in all our construction projects.
Okay, but should we
Eduardo, you had referenced something about our own coastal permits in the very beginning when you, can you explain that?
Yes, sure. So, so every city in California, who, at least every coastal city, who has a what's called a local certified plan, coastal plan, if you have, if the city has a local certified coastal plan that is certified by the California Coastal Commission, each of those cities can issue its own coastal permits.
Independent of the coastal
Independent of the coastal commission, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And the sequence of events would be that, that those coastal development permits are granted at the city level, and then, as with any permit that the commission approves or denies, there are appealable rights to the council. And even though we have our own certified plan and we can issue our coastal permits, the last, the last resort could be that someone could appeal it to the coastal commission, but if no one appeals it to the, to the, to the commission, I mean, to the council or the coastal commission, then it's a done deal.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? Sure.
So what would be the designated traffic path for the demolition product? You said nothing would go in the south, so going north, I assume, which way would it go?
So the trucks will arrive and reach the security gate. There is a 24/7 security gate attendant, and they will enter from that gate. And when they exit, they will make a left. So all trucks will come from the north, going southbound, and will exit going left, northbound.
And then to Imperial? Is that their designated route?
I will let the applicant
Yeah, I believe, I believe that is designated, but we do have the applicant here who can shed some light on that.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open up public communications. As always, the first right goes to the applicant. Hello, sir?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, good evening, Chair Baldino and Vice Chair Newman and Commissioners. I'm George Bianca. That's P as in Paul, I-A-N-T-K-A. I'm here on behalf of El Segundo Power, that's 301 Vista Del Mar in El Segundo. In my role, I'm the head of environmental for NRG's California region, and I'm representing the applicant and owner here. Just clarification, the El Segundo Power facility that we've owned since, since 98, formerly Edison, it's a 24-hour, 24/7 power production facility. These units, three and four, the boiler structures only we're gonna remove are in retired since 2015, as Maria mentioned. The plants to the far north are active power plant. They're actually for El Segundo Energy Center, five through eight. So our project is really intended to make certain surgically remove these boiler structures so we don't impact very important infrastructure that we have there. The facility is 24/7, so we have security there that allow the gates to open very early, so no queuing outside. We've got ample space for craft, for outages, all the, all the work that we do historically there. There's ample parking and space there, so we won't have any queuing there. When we talk about access, you come in from Imperial Highway, by way of the freeways, the craft, the trucks will come in that way. And they'll travel down Imperial Highway, you know, left turn onto Vista Del Mar, right into the power plant. And they'll circle through the plant for any staging that's done around the 3-4 footprint. And then they'll exit the same way and go left, and make their way back toward Vista Del Mar and Imperial Highway. And, you know, the materials that we're generating are scrap, recyclable materials substantially. There will be some waste that will manage all in accordance of regulations, but we'll ensure that all staff are all craft and trucks leave to the north and arrive from the north.
I assume they can go to the north, that you mean, but are they gonna go Imperial? I just don't want them going through the community, is my point.
Correct.
Going north or wherever. I just want, prefer that we can guarantee that they go north and then Imperial Highway or further than that.
That's correct. They'll, they'll, they'll make their way to Imperial Highway. You know, this facility has a long history. You know, we constructed a new power plant in, in 2013. We followed all the, you know, that same, same process, same traffic control plan. And we don't go through grand, you know, for that activity, so.
So you said it's waste material, it's the, you know, the scrap that's a part of the demo. What else is in that waste that's heading?
Well, you know, traditional power plant will have materials, oils, lubricating materials that are historically reused with the plant. The plant's been drained, dried, decommissioned in, after 2015, so it's been sitting ready to get to the point where we can demo. So, you know, any materials that's not recyclable will just be managed and disposed of in accordance with all the regulations. It's what we do all the time for an operating plant and for plants that we have decommissioned and retired like this one.
And what do you do with that space once, once the units are demoed?
Yeah, so 3-4, the boiler structure, that's the most vertical structure, so as Maria mentioned, once it's removed, it really improves the view shed. There is the control room. There's a rectangular cinder block building there that, that we've, we've moved our, our team into trailers until we could go back in there, so we'll still have that operating space. And then on the, on the eastern edge is, is the, what we call the steam turbine deck that, that'll still remain underneath is is part of facilities that we still manage and use, so we're just removing the most obvious. But at this point, you know, it's about getting rid of safely the retired equipment and then going back in and utilizing that space for the power plant purposes.
I just had a quick question about the, the location of your power plant and what's being demolished to, to the bike path, and of course, to the cars going by and the surfers. Excuse me, will there ever be a time that you need to shut that area down, that there could be, you know, airborne pollutants that may not be healthy for people as they, as they're walking their dog by? Is there ever a time that that would ever happen or need to happen?
No, no, I don't see that. The bike path, as we mentioned, Maria mentioned in her presentation, that will be un- unimpacted and will remain open. Likewise, the road. We're talking about passenger vehicles and traditional trucks leaving the equipment.
Primary metal, concrete, those kinds of things?
Correct, correct, substantially the metal.
Traditional construction takedown.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
We received a written communication concerned about air pollution?
Yeah, so, you know, regulations, we fall under South Coast AKMD, I think we realize that. There's visible emission regulations on that, so we will abide by that. This isn't gonna be difficult. We do have contingencies with water, you know, misting to handle any dust if there is dust. I mean, the plant's been, you know, largely decommissioned and drain dry and all those things I mentioned, but if there is dust, we'll be ready there with dust suppression, and we'll meet those regulations for visible emissions.
And you previously demoed two other large components, correct?
Yeah, that's what Maria was showing in the figure there. To the north, formerly called units one and two, those are the 1950, mid 50s steam boiler units. A little smaller than three and four. Three and four were mid 60s, but we demoed those in 2010, 2011. We finished, the new plant was built in 2013. It's been operating since, and so we've got a lot of experience on managing these kind of demos.
During the demo of unit one and unit two, were there any AQOMD violations or citations?
There was a citation. Now, one of the aspects of that project was, was a, a, after all the materials, all the, all the abatement, everything was, was, you know, removed from it substantially. The, the, the bottom of the boiler units, they were detonated and collapsed on itself. And, and so, you know, it was a, it was, it was an activity that was, it was a milestone. It was one of the first ones through coal plants from that era, gonna be replaced with a new generation. There's a lot of tension on it, and helicopters and the city, city was well aware of it. We communicated upfront. Members of the public were observing as this milestone, and helicopters roaming around. The AKMD cited on visible emissions, and it was really, you had the detonation, you know, like fireworks. You did have materials that, that did show visible emissions. We got a citation, and after a long process, it was, it was processed, and it was a very minor one, but this project is not anything like that. This is a surgical removal. We got an active power plant right next to it. There's no detonation, no, no, no process like that. We're gonna, we're gonna take it down basically piece by piece.
Okay, so the citation was basically because of the use of explosives and the after effects?
It was the visible emissions. The reality is, is I think it was a $1,200 fine, if I remember right, and
But for this one, there'll be no explosive use?
No, no, no.
And I think condition number seven says the use of explosives for demolition is prohibited.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
It was, it was a permitted detonation. It was a, it was a state permit on it, but that was the outcome, and we managed that with AKMD.
And do you believe you can continue with your demolition and deconstruction and comply with the El Segundo noise ordinance that we have?
We do, we do.
Okay.
Don't see any issue there.
All right, so would you have any objection if we just added language that the operations would comply with whatever the noise ordinance is? Do we have a section for that?
I guess EMC for
Yeah, whatever it is. I mean, you're limited, the time is 7:30, as Eduardo said, which is a little bit later than normal.
Well, the ordinance is, I know, is seven, seven to six, so for, for the actual activity. I know that we've got a lot of experience here. This is gonna be well, you know, below the, you know, the ordinances and noise ordinance, so we have no concern. And like I mentioned, 24/7 operation, we have plant personnel come in at all hours. We know how to, where to park, how to be quiet, how to manage our activities. You know, I think that the, the activities that'll create any Um, you know, I think that the, the activities that'll create any real noise, um, um, will be substantially done in that, in that morning period. Uh, we're not gonna be, it's getting, it gets dark early. We can't, we can work till six, but we, we just won't do that. I know that the craft come for all over. They'll, they'll travel, get there timely and, and, um, I don't see an issue. Uh, the ordi- the, the CM, the, the ordinance, uh, at seven is, is, um, is quite helpful from, from that perspective because we don't have much daytime, but we also know that we propose, it's proposed at seven thirty. We just want to meet, meet the city, make everybody happy on this and get this.
So your condition is actually more restrictive than what the city typically allows?
Yeah, yeah, it, um, there's a lot of, a lot of parties are trying to, trying to appease here, but I know that, um, you know, our, our craft is gonna be ready, uh, anxious to get this, you know, done as timely, but, you know, any activities in the morning, i- i- we're always very cognizant and make as minimal, um, activities. Like, you know, the bigger stuff will happen, you know, in that, uh, within those timeframe, so.
So it's a fourteen month process to do both of them?
Yeah, i- i- it is. Um, and, and, you know, like these projects, you can think of it as, um, a lot of the heavier lifting early, um, kind of the wrap up toward the end. Uh, so that's the overall schedule. I, I have, uh, Ralph Wagner from my, uh, our department of our development engineering team. He's a project manager. He's sitting with, with me here, but, um, that's the overall schedule. It's, uh, you know, fourteen months to, to make sure we're all wrapped up, so. And it's, it's only, uh, two grade. Uh, this is not a blow ground. We're not removing foundations. Like I mentioned, we have, um, ongoing, um, activities and, uh, equipment that'll, that'll still be maintained there, so.
Is there remediation that needs to happen underneath at the ground level once everything's gone?
You know, uh, for what we're doing here, uh, it will not happen, but also, uh, the faci- uh, facility is, uh, under investigation activities. It's, uh, under, uh, Department Toxic Substance Control. It's, you know, a long history there. We've, have a lot of phases of, of assessment that we've done. Uh, but at this point, uh, the project is not disturbing the subsurface. Uh, there are other, other portions of, you know, three, four that will remain and, um, you know, at this point, so we won't be doing remediation. We won't be doing blow groundwork for this work.
Do you have future plans for the facility, for that particular site? And I'm asking because I'm just curious if, if we're, I don't, I don't want to tread the line of piecemealing a project by demolition and constructing something else if this is part of a bigger plan that's.
Yeah, it's, it's no part of a bigger plan. I mean, the main focus is safety, but, um, you know, this has been, uh, you know, a facility that's aged and is deteriorating. Frankly, we want to get it done as soon as possible. And we've really been pushing and I, I thank, thank, uh, the planning staff, the city staff so much for this because y- y- as we know, we get further in. We had pretty good rain just recently. Uh, the winds kick up, uh, you know, the sooner we get after this before, um, you know, before we get too far into the, into the weather, uh, the better. And so I think substantially a lot of stuff we'll be able to start bringing down. But, you know, in terms of, um, you know, a, you know, the site has been under Energy Commission, uh, jurisdiction, uh, not these three, four boilers. They're not part of that. But, uh, but there isn't anything, you know, specific. Uh, you know, we're just, as a power generator, we're, we're here to meet the, the grid needs, the grid needs of changing and changing all the time, but, um, you know, right now, uh, this is not, um, there's not a specific project or anything around that area.
Is this the same site that the proposed D cell was happening?
Yes, uh, that, that, that was and, um, I think good two years ago, almost to the day, uh, that project was, uh, was canceled by West Basin, so.
Yeah, I think because you bring up, uh, you know, restoring the view there, it's, it's easy to take it away, but then once you give something back to the, you know, the community or the people coming back, if you want to construct something later and then now obstruct that view, it'll be harder for, you know, people like us to approve if you've given the view back and, and now we're taking it away is my.
Right, no, I, I, fair point. Uh, boy, that, uh, that structure as well as the prior nineteen fifty's structure was so different. You know, what, how it performed, what it did is, is so different. And it was very vertical, especially in a, a small space like that. I, um, I don't, I don't see a structure like that. You know, I can't imagine it to be honest, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, anyone else, member of the public, want to make comment on this? Now is your time. Seeing no rush to the podium, I'll go ahead and close public communication. Oh, can you, you have to step up, sir, and use the microphone and just tell us your name?
Uh, Lyle Mall, been N B president, but I work over here in El Segundo. Only question is, when their trucks are leaving, making a left-hand turn onto Vista Del Mar, is that a signaled intersection where they are or were they gonna have somebody there to help stop traffic and guide the trucks out? Because they could be leaving during rush hour traffic as well and big trucks making a left-hand turn there. Can be dangerous.
Uh, I know there's no signal just from driving by, uh, but I don't know if they'll have a flagman out there if that's part of the plan. I can ask the applicant if you don't mind. Any other public comments? No? Um, do, do you mind responding to that question?
Yes, George Bianca on behalf of El Segundo Power, um, sorry. Yeah, so one of the key features there is there's a, there's a pocket lane that helps, uh, turn, um, out of there. Uh, there's likewise a pocket lane to turn into the plant and that was utilized very well. Um, I know we had a lot of trucks building the new plant and don't recall any issues, but if, if there, there was, um, you know, a, a, anything problematic, we would, you know, we'd, we'd react and act accordingly, but I, I know from our experience, uh, those pocket lanes served us very well, so.
Okay, so in your history of doing construction and deconstruction, you haven't had an issue. If one should arise, you're saying you can put someone out there to make sure it goes away?
When, when we've had very long, um, equipment that, you know, the trailer that brought in the biggest, uh, uh, generating units for the new plant, we had to make those accommodations. Uh, but we're, we're talking, you know, traditional trucks, uh, haul trucks. Uh, I don't, I don't see that issue, but of course we'll monitor that very closely, so.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right, now I'll close public communication. Uh, all further comments shall come from the dais. Any additional comments?
Yeah, I guess my question and maybe it's for the city is what, what's the mechanism for enforcement and, you know, monitoring enforcement? If it, if there are occasional loud noises and it does look like dust is coming, what's, what's the process that the public takes in order to, um, make a complaint and hopefully somebody does something about that?
Right, and, and just like any construction site, um, it really depends on, on what it is that, that's, uh, that's being, uh, or the impacts that are being observed. Uh, if it's, if it's dust, typically as the applicant has said, you know, watering it down and that helps and that's one of the BMPs. So this project, just like any other one, would be subject to those BMPs, uh, every, every single one of them to best management practices to minimize impacts, uh, from construction, which one of those is, like I said, is watering. Um, if there are a lot of, uh, dust, uh, that, that, that people continue to see, the other avenue is, is also contacting AQMD and they would also do their own investigations. But, uh, we, we will typically handle it in-house with our, uh, building inspectors or, or, or our other, other code enforcement staff to, um, to help, um, you know, address those issues that come up.
And also, this is, uh, um, it's exempt from SEQA, which, you know, I think a project like this would be right in SEQA's alley, right up their alley. So what, what's the condition when something, or to, to, to make this thing not uh, eligible for, for the SEQA process?
Right, so, so there are, there are several, um, uh, exemptions from SEQA and one of the, which is what we found was it is an existing structure that's going to be removed. Um, and that is the exemption that we're using. Um, and, uh, you know, it is a minor enough project that, you know, staff has, have, uh, believes that it fits under that criteria.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Nice to get the view back.
Yeah, yes, and that's why I was bringing up that if you give people the view back, it'll be harder to take it away from them, so just putting it out there.
All right, well, I'm satisfied the applicant has, uh, performed this type of work in the past and, uh, we've sufficiently addressed the concerns that have been raised, so. I, I look forward to these, these buildings being removed, to be quite honest with you. Uh, so unless there's anything else, I'll go ahead and accept a motion.
I, I will move.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of granting a coastal development permit, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay, five through, thank you everyone. All right, our next agenda item is new business. We're gonna discuss the downtown specific plan update and have a planning commission study session. Uh, and it says that people can participate by Zoom, so how will that work?
So, so we currently have, um, a, a Zoom link. Um, I don't know if, um, we can ask Venus, uh, we have a few people that are joining us via Zoom. Um, it's a little bit out of protocol, but we felt that this was, uh, a, a good way to try to expand our reach to get, um, additional public input on this really important and exciting, um, uh, project, so. Uh, we do have a few, a few people that are on, on, uh, on our Zoom and, uh, we will open it up to them as well. Um, a couple of things I just want to let you know in terms of how this is, this is gonna, this will proceed. We definitely want some direction from the commission. Excuse me, uh, we definitely want some direction from the commission. We want to hear from, from the public as well, those who are here, those who are joining us online. Um, and we're gonna break up the, uh, the, the study session into kind of topical areas. And so, uh, the, the presentation will be done by, uh, by our consultant, RRM, who's been helping us, uh, navigate through this, uh, process. As, as you recall, uh, we make, we're making announcements during the summer about, uh, you know, getting people to, to, to take the, the survey that was on, on the city's website. Um, and then as part of that, our, our, our M, uh, has, would also, uh, had, had quite a few interviews with a lot of the stakeholders, uh, in, in and around downtown. And, uh, and, and we've been trying to really push that, push the word out about this, so, um, and then I, Paul has also been working with the school district to get, you know, the word out through, through, um, through the schools. So, you know, we've been trying, you know, really, 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 uh, hard to really get the word out, so, you know, um, but, but anyhow, so, so the, 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 uh, the consultant will go ahead and, and do some topic, uh, discussions. Uh, we'll pause, kind of have a Q and A session, uh, to hopefully get some, some direction from the commission and hear from the public and hear from, you know, from you all as well. And then move on to another topical item, present that, present the findings, present some of the key concepts, and then break again for some Q and A. So, uh, that's kind of the way it's gonna, uh, uh, go here, so. With that, I'll go ahead and, uh, I don't know if Paul, if he had any, a few?
I'll mention something.
Okay.
Uh, just wanted to mention that, that we've been going through an outreach process for the better part of this year. And Eduardo kind of summed, summed up a lot of the activities that we went through for the downtown specific plan. Uh, just for tonight's meeting, this is, these are all the, uh, sort of activities that we engaged in to try to get, uh, the word out, to get people to attend. And, uh, making this accessible via Zoom in addition to in-person was a way to kind of help, uh, engage more people in the process. And, uh, just wanted to mention that we have a team of consultants helping us. RRM is the lead consulting firm on this effort. Uh, EcoTera is the environmental consulting firm that will do a lot of the environmental study. Fair and Peers is the traffic consulting firm, has done some preliminary, um, study and analysis. And, uh, uh, the Nelson Dale Group, uh, also is our, uh, economic and financial consultants that have done some market analysis to help us with this effort. Uh, with that, I will go ahead and hand it off to, uh, Jamie, uh, Williams, who will take it away and I'll be around to, and all the staff will be around to answer any questions and help out.
Can you give us an overview of what the segments or discussion topics will be?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, let me do a tiny bit of protocol. Good evening. Thank you, uh, Chair and Commissioners. I am very excited to be here to talk about this great project. Um, just for the public that might be viewing via Zoom, um, that meeting will be recorded and available on the website later, uh, as well as their mics are muted. And if there's any interest in speaking at the appropriate time, you raise your hand. Um, by now people kind of have got the Zoom thing down, I think, but, uh, it's there if they'd like to speak. And to your benefit, Chair, um, where those little yellow voices are, if you will, that's where we're gonna look for your input. If you want to collect public input by segment, that's fine. Or wait till the end. That might be, uh, great as well. So with that, we have about four main topics. There's a lot of information. Um, I want to remind you that this is preliminary. We did a, we've spent about a year collecting information, doing existing conditions analysis, really understanding the project area. I'm a huge fan of El Segundo. I come here a lot, so, um, it was a privilege to, to get this job. Um, but with that, we're starting to put some preliminary concepts together that are gonna be the foundation for the specific plan. So today, there's no decisions. There's really just, are we on the right track? Are there some areas we should shift? And what are your thoughts to date? So this is a specific plan update. You have a specific plan for the downtown area. It was written over twenty years ago. Um, we, our job is to confirm the vision that was set at that time, to look at what's happened and what hasn't happened and to, to balance that with the community and your interests at this time, to update it. Um, this, the study area is from Miriposa to El Segundo Boulevard and then Eucalyptus to Concord with the primary, um, spine being Main and Grand. The area in pink was not actually in the original specific plan area, but because of, um, some factors where we think those are some opportunity areas, we wanted to include it within the specific plan. A specific, a real quick overview of a specific plan is it's a very unique tool to the state of California and it's pretty wonderful. It essentially allows you to create a master plan, a regulatory master plan for a specific area. So it's taking a, a segment of your town and out of your zoning code and making it, um, speci- specific guidance for that from both the private and the public realm. It must comply with your general plan. There are elements of the zoning code that still will apply, but it allows us to be, do a more tailored approach to a specific area. So as these gentlemen mentioned, we've done a lot of engagement throughout the last year. Um, talked to stakeholders, had an online questionnaire, excuse me, conducted a workshop, did have an interactive mapping tool, and tonight's study session, we're hoping to get more feedback. Um, the interactive mapping tool was very interesting. It was online for several months and people were allowed to drop in their comments on different segments. allowable uses, gathering spaces, place making, which is, um, kind of what it sounds. Making a nice place, so streetscape furnishings or sidewalks, uh, mobility and parking, and then any additional comments. So through that process, we were able to pull out some key elements from the community. Things that their interests and their interests are. Those elements included looking into outdoor gathering and dining areas. Looking at new streetscape improvements, shaded areas, updated landscaping, updated benches, uh, enhancing the downtown entrances and gateways, improving the walkability and providing dedicated bike circulation. Um, I did, uh, creating a unified building signage program and upgrading and providing guidance on building appearance. And then increasing office retail and affordable residential, um, primarily on the upper floors, as well as creating an environment where restaurants, bars and entertainment options are available a little bit later and throughout the week. Couple of other features that were of interest to the community is developing a greenspace, uh, green space and updating the civic center area, um, as well as an interest in keeping Richmond Street closed to vehicles and creating a more permanent environment or pedestrian promenade. Um, and there was an interest in the most acceptable place for the higher building heights was in sort of the Grand Avenue civic and civic center area. So we took all of that and we blended that with the market study to create some of these concepts that I'm gonna present to you tonight. So our economist, Nelson Dale Group, um, highlighted a few things that are of importance. Number one is, everybody knows this, but downtown El Segundo has a really nice downtown, small town charm that's attractive to the area around. Um, there is an interesting dynamic in that, that there's a There is an interesting dynamic in that, that there's a larger daytime employment population, there's a lot of people come here to work, but then they leave. There is, has been a trend for more office demand here, and you'll see that in the next slide, that that continues today, as well as an interest and an opportunity to provide more housing within the, within the city, and particularly within downtown. So this is a summary of the market demand, as our economist has identified it, for your city, and then in the orange box is specifically what could happen in downtown. So from a retail to restaurant, this is new development, a net new, could be $69,000 to $166,000, general will be $115,000. So your highest peak demand is in the office area. Medical offices has a place there with 24,000 square feet, and then multifamily residential could be anywhere from 200 to 375. This is not saying this is what's proposed, this is not saying this is what will actually happen, but there is a demand in your town for this type of, this type of development to occur, should the urban fabric allow for that opportunity. So then it's our job to define where that goes and what it looks like, and where's the most appropriate place for some of that to happen. So with that, we took a look at your existing specific plan, and it had a lot of different districts, it had a whole bunch of, of different areas. And we took a look at it, and we felt like a simplified approach was appropriate at this time. So we have, we have ratcheted it down to four districts, with each with individual characteristics, and we define that because of property size, or lot widths, or architectural character, or future development opportunities. So with that, we talked, we created the Main Street District, the Richmond Street District, the Grand Avenue District, and the Civic Center District. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time defining both the existing conditions and the proposed vision for those areas, and then we'll pause for some questions. So the Main Street District, as you can see, goes from Miriposa to Grand Avenue, it's the, it's the purplish colored area. This is really the heart of your downtown. When you walk around downtown, this is where there's lower building heights, there's smaller narrower lots, the buildings are located right at the street edge with parking behind. But there's some interesting topography there that has some potential for development kind of on the backside. So our vision or our recommendation is to explore these attributes, looking at ways to maintain that historic small-town character through architecture detail, creating and maintaining the pedestrian-friendly environment with the buildings at the street edge, allowing for residential and office, but above or behind the retail restaurant that's at the street front. And then looking for parking to be accessed from the alley, as well as satisfied through your in-lief fee, because there's some incentive to, for these areas to update by giving the, an opportunity for them to provide house, parking somewhere other than onsite. This is a graphic that just demonstrates that alley relationship. So Main Street's on the left, and Market Place is on the right, that's the alley. And you can see that you can still maintain a 30-foot height limit on Main Street that keeps that character, but if you, if you go back towards Market Place, you could actually get an additional story and a little more capacity for development there. Grand Avenue, we really see as your opportunity area. There are large parcels, underutilized, large parking areas exist today that, you know, Chevron owns them, and, but this is a 20-year plan. So it's important to note that this is to provide an opportunity for private investment to happen sometime within the 20 years. It's not a specific project, it's not proposing or promoting development, it's just creating the framework. So within this area, we see this as an opportunity to provide a space for that demand, that the market demand has created, additional residential and additional office uses. Right now, there's people that come into town to work, then they go home. There's housing that's largely single-family homes that may not be as accessible to people with families, or single people, or workers because of affordability. So providing a denser opportunity for people to live downtown creates a more vibrant downtown, where people are working, living, and shopping, and eating all in the same place, without having to come and go. So this area, we think, is probably the most appropriate for that and has the most opportunity. It's also, going backwards, if you look at the photos on the upper left, it's, it does not have the same urban fabric that your Main Street does. There's park, large parking lots at the street edge, and we would propose that new development, similar to the graphics on below, would be designed to create a more pedestrian environment, putting buildings at the street edge, having higher volumes of transparency and windows and storefronts, so that it's a more connected version of the downtown. We would suggest this being the area with the highest heights, that, as I said, you would require, in the graphic, you can see that the ground floor has that pedestrian look and feel, as well as providing opportunities for publicly accessible open space on the private property. The last infill site, I would say, or, or district that has opportunity is the Richmond District. Now, this is an interesting area because it has some of the oldest commercial buildings. It is surrounded by single-family residential, which I should have noted in the last district is pretty insulated. The Gateway District is buffered by commercial uses and other things, so there's less, it's, it's a better opportunity to provide a little more density. Richmond is a different case, so being sensitive to the narrow lots and the buildings located in the, on the street edge is something we want to reinforce. We isolated this from the Main Street, though, because we feel like it's an area that has the opportunity, and already today in your specific plan, allows for professional office, allows for real estate, it allows for, it could allow for residential at the street edge. So it's, it's a similar urban fabric, but you could have more uses that are permitted within this area. So that's the first phase.
Great, thank you. Can you give me just an example of some of the stakeholders you talked to about downtown?
We, Paul, do you want to answer that? We had a.
Yeah, it was a rather long list. We had a lot of property owners from the downtown, a lot of business owners from the downtown and surrounding areas in, in the city, Chamber of Commerce, and some other real estate professionals or developers. It was a variety of groups. Does that help Chair Baldino?
Sure. So if, if we're doing parking and loofahs and we're expanding, the way that works is we take that money and then we create more public parking? Will there be discussion about how we can take away parking that exists today and where that's going to go?
Yes.
We're going to get to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some suggestions.
Okay.
But this plan provides the framework, as I said, but it will also include an implementation plan. And the implementation plan will recommend some future actions, and a more in-depth study of, you know, your in-lief fee program is one of the recommendations. Because I, I think your in-lief fee, I think it's great that you have it, I think that there's room for probably improvement in how it's being implemented.
Any questions before I open up for public comment?
It's not a specific question, but when you talk about office, just because, you know, we hear a lot about a decrease in office demand, and that's a concern east of PCH, and how that impacts our businesses there. So then how do we reconcile that with saying mixed use on this side of town would actually encourage office? And maybe that's a question for the economist to talk to.
It is. However, you're, you're right. So the bottom line is, the pandemic created a whole sort of situation that people aren't quite sure how to handle yet. There's a lot of people. What we're finding, though, is that the hybrid workplace is, is happening. So there's a number of people working at home, but there's a number of people coming in the office. The amount of office demand for the city of El Segundo is very high. So even factoring in the fact that the hybrid and the pandemic and everything else is creating sort of a little bit of, something that nobody can really figure out quite yet, there's still a very high level of that in this community.
And is there capacity for something like live-work to be? How would that be different than just having residential above? Because there's an opportunity to have office below and residential above, and those are live-work units that could be constructed?
Yeah, I don't want to answer that because I don't, I didn't do the economic study. I also, just from my familiarity with El Segundo, I think that there's opportunity for that in the Smoky Hollow area, so that would have to be looked at in more detail because you wouldn't want to kind of.
Compete with that.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Will we already allow residential above on downtown?
Right. But it's limited on Main Street to above. So in some, in, I would, what we're recommending is in the gateway area, which is south of Grand, you could have residential on the ground floor, and office on the ground floor.
On Main Street?
On Main Street.
South of Grand.
South of Grand.
Is it north?
North, on Main Street, north of Grand, we would, we would maintain it above or behind.
Was there any discussion? Was there any, any discussion about higher density closer to the refinery? Was that, that factor into any of your brainstorming when it comes to putting that more, the, the bigger density south of Grand?
Yes. So essentially, that's, that was what I was getting at, whereas it's, it's a little bit of a donut. You have the refinery, you have some commercial uses, you have a very big street, it's very much insulated and buffered, and so if you could create an opportunity there that's, that actually connected it to downtown, but it creates an opportunity for it to be denser because it's not going to be right next to single-family homes.
Lots of cities and towns around the country have higher density in the exact urban core, you know, right around the, the city center, and then kind of spread out from there. This is a little bit opposite. Main Street here and Civic Center has lower density in your plan, but it's higher density further away from Main Street. And I realize we're only talking a couple blocks.
Exactly. I think it's hard to, I think in this context, it's important to recognize the size and scale. So it's really just creating an opportunity across the street that's a little bit more tolerable, I would say, or man, or desirable even, than on the other side where it's more intense. And the opportunity doesn't, there's not the same opportunity because of the size of the lots. It would take a lot of lot consolidation to create anything of that magnitude north.
Right, right. Let me ask a question, and maybe it's for city staff. There, there was some planning going on for Civic Center at some point, right? And that was independent of this, of this downtown specific plan? Or are we going to see some of that thinking here tonight?
Sort, we sort of are, but maybe you want to, I don't know if you want to ask.
Yeah, I, I think the, the separate effort ended about a year ago. There was no fruits of that labor at that time, and so there was conversations about the Civic Center Plaza out of this process. It was separate, and I think we'll have some feedback from what the team heard from the community as it releases Civic Center Plaza. But that previous effort ended about a year ago.
Well, and that makes sense. You would want to start with the plan before you did the design of the Civic Center, so that makes sense. I just wondered where that was in the process. Thank you.
One question, in your experience with working with other communities, a survey response like that, is that about typical to only get 130 responses back, given our population size? And do you feel like that captures enough that we're having that, plus the stakeholders, really gives us an idea of what people are after?
I will tell you that engaging in a web-based platform has created a lot more involvement than typical pre-pandemic workshops. So we, we're getting more feedback from a lot of more people, based on them being able to do it in their own home or at their own timeframe. So that's sort of a typical, I think, yeah. I think it's good that the city has been like the flyer that goes to the school district. So this will, hopefully, people at home are participating in this and can provide additional feedback, too.
Can you go back to the map of all the four districts? The Grand Avenue District, you, you've got the two shopping centers, but right next to that Rite Aid is the Standard Station, which is a sports bar.
Yeah.
Why, what's the thought process of excluding that from the rest of downtown?
You're talking about just left of the letter G, right?
South of the northern, no, the westernmost on your map by Grand there?
Yeah. It.
No, 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 this.
I think, Paul, is that not the, the boundary for the Smoky Hollow specific plan?
Yeah.
Isn't that in the blue, right there?
I think that's that abandoned.
The abandoned lot.
Yeah, that, that field that we're growing, our farm.
It's a nice farm.
The community garden, I should call it. But yeah, so Standards and the Smoky Hollow.
Where, I think we're looking for confirmation, but I believe that's where the boundary for Smoky Hollow's specific plan is.
Okay, was there a conversation about whether, you know, a sports bar is more suited for downtown versus Smoky Hollow, or?
Well, I, I, I guess the better question is, would you envision that to be, is that an opportunity site? And, and, you know, really, this is a tool to, to facilitate redevelopment and investment, and are we expecting?
You're saying we want high-density, four-story, you want a large lot like these two strip malls.
Right. Is Standard Corporate even going to offer something to help effectuate this plan?
Right, okay.
I think that's.
I was wondering what the thought process was.
So I have a couple. I don't know where, I have a bunch of questions, but I'm going to just ask a couple because I don't know where they actually fit into all this. I know this is kind of the precursor. But then thank you for, for bringing this out into Zones. I think this is very helpful for me, how I, I look at things. In your studying the Zones, is there a primary point of access that visitors come from? And I'm asking this because I'm a big, I'm very big on, you know, the, the character and feel and the wow factor of when you come to an area, whether you're not, you know you're in the area or not. Is there a certain primary access point where we, as a community, could put something where it will catch visitors' eyes, like, and be like, wow, this is my, my visual memory of El Segu, of going to downtown El Segundo versus coming down and passing the 7-Eleven on Imperial?
Yes. So there are what we would call gateways, and I didn't do a very good job of talking through the plan. So the very first segment of this presentation is about land use. It's about the private property area within these three districts. The second part of this presentation, we'll be talking about the Civic Center. The third, we'll be talking about gateways and public realm of the streets and cross-sections and, and different right-of-way opportunities. There's four, so somehow I skipped one. But, but that is sort of the, the framework. So it, the next will be the Civic Center, and then we'll go into the gateways and, and right-of-way.
So Jamie, do you imagine these are branded as these districts?
No, uh, no. I would say that you, what I do recommend is that we explore an opportunity to brand downtown.
The whole.
The whole. The only reason this is being segmented into four districts is, has to do with land use and building form. That's it. The public realm, meaning all the streets, are all about a unified experience, unified streetscape furnishings, unified gateway treatment, potentially a brand or a logo that's associated with here's downtown. Unified streetscape furnishings, unified gateway treatment, potentially a brand or a logo that's associated with here's downtown. Um, very much more improved signage and wayfinding on where the parking is. You have, I'm getting to it, but you have actually capacity. But it's, it's, you know, a little bit less than easy to find.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree, I think that the branding is very important. Like for me, I, it would be great if there was something that, some landmark of some sort where, you know, the, the young kids. Cause like posts on Instagram, like yeah, now I'm in El Segundo because of, I'm, I'm here at this point. But in, in terms of character, I, I do think that there is kind of like a character imbalance from, you know, the, 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 the Main Street District to the, uh, Grand Avenue District, maybe it's a day and nighttime kind of thing. And I feel like, um, if there's a way we can make the, uh, Civic Center District, the part, you know, the, um, I guess, um, east of, of Main Street. Because that just becomes a, a distance you have to walk at night because it's dark, there's no, um, commercial stuff there. If we can incorporate that into the character of making everything from, you know, from, from Mariposa to El Segundo Boulevard. Some cohesive walking path that we could use with pocket parks and not just areas to, um, you know, areas that are tied to specific restaurants, maybe there's just, um, passive places to, to spend time. So that, you know, everything will be more, I, I guess, cohesive, not use the same word, but yeah. That would be my ideal thing. But and, and like I said, I have a lot of thoughts, I think, and I had a question, but I'll turn, turn this into kind of framing the challenge here of. We, we want to attract visitors to this area with the challenge of people are working hybrid now. And, you know, we, we just won an award for being the most business-friendly city in, in LA County. Which is fantastic, that's bringing a lot of employees here, but it's bringing employees to different parts of the city. So how do we get those employees to make their way over here while reducing VMTs? Um, you know, because that's important for the environment, um, you know, and we don't have the parking to do it. And we all want to, you know, utilize some streets for outdoor dining. So it's, how do we get people here with all those challenges ahead of us? Just to frame, you know, what, what the purpose of this, uh, exercise is for today, something for us all to think about.
Good comment.
Chair, if I might, um, just re- reframe our conversation a little bit. Uh, cause I think the commission is moving in a direction that is facilitating some of the future conversations. And so I just want to make sure we can move from this, which is the general direction uh, of having these four sort of sub-districts. Is, is, does this look, does it, do the feels that Jamie presented, uh, do the aesthetics, the concept? Is that in alignment with, what the Planning Commission, uh, sees in these sort of four sub-districts?
I, I, I believe so, I think this is a great starting point for, for where we are. I think breaking down districts really, uh, helps us with the conversation rather than just kind of looking at it as one whole thing. And we can kind of attack each area with their own individual challenges.
Yeah, keep going.
Yeah, I would agree, I haven't, I hadn't thought about it this way, but now that you lay it out, it does help my brain process it, so.
Awesome.
Um, let's open this up for public communication and see if anyone else has comments in the room or on Zoom, so. Anyone want to make a comment on what we've talked about so far? We're talking about land use, this is exciting stuff.
It is.
Just kind of step on up, tell us your name, please. We have a huge home viewing audience.
Um, probably mostly my family. Uh, I'm Bridgette, uh, and I live at, uh, one, four, two, seven East Elm. And I think a lot of this small-time charm that we know from El Segundo has to do with the, the, the lack of parking and the lack of big, yeah. So I, I really want to see a lot of infrastructure for more bike usage. Now that I'm commuting as a parent and I commute my kid to school. I've noticed so many more people bringing their kids to school on bikes and also biking home from work. And so I think everybody in El Segundo can bike around and can walk around. So if those, if that's, if we have nice bike parking, safe bike parking, plus, um, you know, for the kids to safely bike. Um, I think that would really kind of double down on a lot of this small to- town feel. And, uh, be better for everybody as well. And so, um, yeah, I wasn't really here to advocate for bike lanes. So since I'm already here, I do want to advocate for a lot of native plants to be planted. Uh, there's a lot of us in the community that are really embracing that. Um, uh, El Segundo is known for their blue butterfly, which very few people have actually seen. And it's, uh, it's host plant, it only has one plant that it needs to live. And so native plants for the biodiversity, for, um, good water retention and flooding and all these good benefits. Um, we'd like to see obviously the pocket parks, but yeah, maybe a demonstration. Um, I, I don't know if we're going to get to more plant, yeah, I figured we were, but I had to say that about the bikes. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thanks Bridgette, that's usually my job, the, uh, the bike lane.
Come on up.
My name is Barbara Boland, I've lived here for four years. Um, a resident, um, my husband and I lived on Whiting Street. And I'm here, I'm a master gardener. And before we moved here, um, I was very hopeful to come and find out about the El Segundo. Master, one, one thing master gardeners do is a lot of research in addition to garden. So I hope that I would come here and find a lot of native planting areas where I could see not only the El Segundo blue butterfly, but other indigenous flora and fauna. And I really want to see in this, there, i- i- it's very hard to find. There's another woman who I've connected with here, um, who might come or not. But she's, we're trying to put together this kind of knowledge and bring it forward. And I think the Civic Center, um, would be in, we have, it, it's, it's so, there's so much space here to put in these fabulous gardens that, like Bridgette said, don't need a lot of water, they don't need a lot of chemicals. Um, also there, you could build raised beds where people who have problems getting around or wheelchairs. Um, it could be a whole separate sensory garden, um, there's so much we can do. Um, there was one other thing I wanted to say. Uh, oh well, but anyway, yeah, so there's something here I could add to your. I don't know, it's just about the El Segundo blue butterfly, um, it's very important. There is only one host plant that it ha- that, that it needs and I planted it in my front yard. And this year I had El Segundo blue butterflies. They come, they only take, they only fly about half a mile. So it's sad that, um, Culver City, uh, Manhattan Beach is now building Redondo, Torrance. They're all building these areas for the blue butterfly. And here there's only one little patch, which is over by the Doc Weiler, um, uh, buildings, whi- which is left of the. So we need to really bring that back for El Segundo. So I don't know who would like to have this.
You can give it to Paul.
So thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, I think your friend Monica Davis already volunteered your services. She sent an email. So she's putting you to work, I don't know if you knew that.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Great, any other comments? What about Zoom, how do we check in with our friends on Zoom? No one's raising a hand, there's no one on Zoom?
No, it's, it's a couple on Zoom, no one's raising a hand.
Okay, alright, oh, Mark, you gotta, you gotta step up, you know the rules, come on.
Do I need to press anything?
No, just tell us who you are.
Mark Christian, uh, relatively recent resident, six years. Um, mine is sort of a nerdy question. I'm looking at this map and I heard someone mention that part of what's happening in that, uh, Grand Avenue District is sort of bordered by Smoky Hollow. The Smoky Hollow specific plan. Are there other parts of this map that are also bordered by other specific plans? Or no, or how does that work? I just didn't follow that.
The Smoky Hollow Plan kind of covers the, uh, yeah, the, used to be Light Industrial from here to Chevron. And then it runs all the way almost to PCH. And so that, we're actually redoing that, we did it about eight years ago to get rid of Light Industrial and do kind of whatever you want, creative office, however you want it. So when we say it borders, that just means they've got their own specific set of rules. But I don't think there's any other specific plan, it's just kind of residential.
Okay, alright, that was my question.
Okay, thanks. Oh, we've got our first Zoom comment. Let's see how we get this to work.
Okay, um, we are now summoning Maria Halpine, if you can unmute yourself, we already unmuted you on this side, so go ahead. Hi, um, we are also relatively, uh, almost five years new to El Segundo. Um, and mine is kind of a general question. Um, so kind of following along with the development of different areas and bringing in more dense, um, housing options in that, um, southeast quadrant. Is, are, for the, are the goals for all of these areas similar? Like are we, so the, so the other comment about increased bike lanes. Are we kind of targeting a plan to bring more people from outside El Segundo into Sal- El Segundo? Or to kind of pull out residents that are already here? Or increase density to bring new people into downtown? Or are we trying to kind of do all of those things? Um, mainly because I'm not entirely sure that they all, I think there's overlaps between them. But those, those might be kind of different goals, particularly with respect to parking and, um, you know. I think I saw walk spaces come up later, but I don't know if that's a formulated enough question or not, but.
Yeah, I think it's what's the point of redoing the downtown plan, what is our goal, right?
Yeah, and, and if there are specific different goals for these different quadrants. Like is that part of the value of breaking them out this way?
Yeah, I think the overarching goal is do, how do we, you know, bring more life and activity to downtown? And the idea is with these quadrants, maybe they can have an over-universal characteristic. But have different aspects or different qualities based on what the land use is, the lot sizes, things like that.
Thank you.
Oh, we have another comment, come on, just step on up, tell us your name, thanks for coming.
Thank you, hi, my name is Monica Davis and I live on fourteen twelve East Maple. Been here about eighteen years, uh, my kids are in the high school and water pole practice, go Eagles. Anyways, um, I have been working and meeting with people and networking pe- with people to try to figure out how to conserve the El Segundo blue butterfly. Uh, a hundred years ago, this was all coastal area and the blue butterfly had free reign. Um, as we become an urban beach city, uh, we've lost their habitat. So the goal and the desire that I have is to build more habitat and in building more, uh, habitat that is a native plant friendly for the blue bu- blue, El Segundo blue butterfly. Then they will come. Uh, one of the ladies I'm working with, uh, from the El Segundo Blue Butterfly Committee, a different committee. They planted, um, some big swast down in Redondo Beach by the Esplanade. And although an El Segundo blue butterfly can only fly a quarter of a mile, they migrated all the way to Redondo Beach. So Redondo Beach has done a big portion of land donated to, dedicated to preserving habitat. Uh, the Bologna Wetlands has done a lot of work to preserve habitat for implants. In El Segundo, we have the area that's kind of fenced off under the airport that, um, provides some habitat, although I think there's some question about planting and what needs to be changed there. I'm not the botanist in this group. Um, Chevron has their, their little corner of the blue butterfly habitat. But most of those areas are cordoned off so that people can't really walk and see and look at the blue butterflies. I was, um, I invited Drew last year because blue butterflies are only out, uh, out of their chrysalis stage for about a period of time of about six to eight weeks. So I invited Drew and he was so excited to see blue butterflies. There's one little spot down by the youth center, right on the coast, where you can see them by the bike path there. And, um, the environmental committee here in town is very excited about doing something. So I'm trying to formulate a committee or a conserv- conservancy to figure out how we can bring some funds and bring some habitat back to an endangered species that is named after our city. So with that said, I said, I saw the flyer for this and I said, why not have some of this habitat include El Segundo blues? So that people, normal people can walk around and see an El Segundo blue butterfly. So that's my pitch, is that we need El Segundo to be open, willing and set aside time and money to, in space, to preserve an endangered species that is identified endangered through the, um, US Department of Wildlife? No, US Department of whatever it is, I've forgotten, I have it, I have all the notes, I have so much information, I have a lot of connections. But I thought this is the place to start, let's put them in our native, our neighboring areas.
Can I ask, is there a size requirement, that you need a certain area for this to work? Or can you just plant, you know, down the street, the same type of natural plant?
You can plant, there needs to be enough habitat, but if every couple of houses had a bush, it would be enough. So if the Civic Center, Main Street area that we're talking about here had some here and there and around. The blue butterfly has shown to be extremely resilient when the environment, when the right habitat is there. Um, there's one little spot on the, uh, Imperial, that, that hill from, look at the dog park down. The Tree Musketeers at one point many years ago did a little plot there. I haven't explored that during blue butterfly season. Um, but I was just thrilled myself to finally see one, I mean Drew, it was, you can ask him, I took him down there. He was like, I actually saw one, I, you know, I saw some guys arguing at the, at the restaurant down by the blue butterfly, saying, you know, I don't even think they exist. Has anybody in the room seen a blue butterfly? Well, I, I'm happy to do tours during their season, so, so, um, anyways, that's all I have to share.
That flyer, can, can you show me what the, what the plant is?
Yeah, wait, what is the plant, Monica?
Okay, yes, the plant, there are a variety of plants, but the primary plant is called Coastal Sea Buck. And it's not the most attractive looking plant. You would argue?
Buckweed, yeah.
And it's its only plant.
It's the nectar from the plant, it lays its eggs in the flower of the plant. The tiny, tiny, tiny caterpillar climbs down the stalk of the plant. It go, it does fi- it molts five times as it's progressing from the butt of the flower to the root of the system of the plant. It then, uh, becomes a chrysalis in the ground under the plant. So you're not to disturb the ground very much. And then it lays in chrysalis for fi- eleven months. It comes out for a month to mate. The ma- males are brown primarily, there's little orange specks, but to the common person, they'll look brown. Uh, the females, excuse me, the, the females are brown, the males are trying to attract a mate, so they are the blue ones.
Well, that's deceiving.
Stop.
In most species in nature, the, uh, males are the colorful ones because they have to attract females.
Alright, well, thank you so much.
I get about our outfit.
Go ahead.
Bridgette again, thank you for having me. It's, it's not just about the, um, the, the El Segundo blue butterfly. I mean, that's great because Els- it says El Segundo and it's the plant that we want to have here with that bug. But there's so many other bugs and critters and live, a- a- and life that we want to see from the native plants. So I didn't want it to look like there was some kind of like native, um, butterfly enthusiast here today. The, the plants actually that we want to see planted, the native plants are also really good for the, for, um, drainage and the lack of fertilizer, which is a big problem. Every time people put fertilizer on their yards, it just washes out into the oceans. It makes that algae bloom that kills all the pelicans and whatnot. So if we could demonstrate, I mean, the beauty of living in a small city is that we have a voice that can go, you know, I can come up here and, and ask you guys for this and say, you know, we'd like to see, uh, to revert back to better ways. And with a small city, we can do that and, and these native plants don't need any fertilizer, they're native to this area. And so it means a lot less of manpower, a lot less water, a lot less maintenance. And we just want, that maybe we thought with this redevelopment, we can use it as a platform to show everybody what they can do in their front yard. So my, my front yard is all native plants. Um, and so it's interesting looking, it's not conventional, I think it's beautiful. Um, so Ann Simmons has a beautiful, uh, front yard, those are all native plants. And so instead of just having a private yard, if we could do something on the city level that it could de- really show as, be as a role model for all the, uh, individual people to be like, okay, well I can plant this. And it, it, it just, it has a lot of benefits, so.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, let's keep moving.
You guys are gonna love the next section. So, uh, let's get to the civic center area. Um, the civic center area today houses primarily civic uses. There's a, um, a parking area, a surface parking lot that is a little underutilized. Um, and there is a plaza that probably has an opportunity for something different and new. Uh, as well as some lawn areas on either the north and, and west, um, south side that also are potential opportunities for blue butterfly habitat or native planting, something that utilizes a lot less water. So we took a deeper dive into that and want to explore, um, what could happen in this district. So number one, the yellow, um, stars are public gathering areas that we think could be reinvented. In addition, there is an opportunity for the parking area, which is in teal. Um, that could potentially be converted utilizing in Luffy money into a structure. A nice looking structure, the, the image on the bottom left is a parking structure. Um, so something that would be appropriate for downtown, but would provide additional public parking in addition to the city, um, utilization that it has today. So we are proposing two alternatives to get your feedback on. One is a more sort of urban, um, plaza type experience and the other would be more of a central green opportunity. Um, regardless of which option we roll with as the preferred alternative, we want to look at a number of things that would happen in either one. And so those elements include, uh, creating opportunities for entertainment space, outdoor, you know, um, music or, or present, or presentations, um, public art, additional landscaping, native habitat, um, secured bicycle parking, public restrooms and a branded downtown El Segundo sign. So in option one, which we're kind of calling the entertainment, uh, dining area, we're thinking about, as today, you had a wonderful farmer's market. What if that was, it was able to be a more permanent part of the plaza space? So it could be pop-up for local restaurants, you could have kiosks, you could have outdoor dining areas, um, usable and inviting open space, water features, um, it could be closed. Uh, the street, when the street is closed, it's sort of an expansion of that area. It's a little bit like that today, but, you know, just two hours ago, if you're out there, everybody's sort of on the fringe and nobody's coming into that civic space. There's something about that space that is not welcoming. And so redesigning that so that people are flowing in and utilizing this space would be valuable. So this is an imagery on what potential things could happen there. Alternative number two would be more of a natural look. And we're calling it central green, native and drought tolerant plants, gazebos, benches, communal seating, um, passive and relaxative activity spaces. Um, and so these are some of the graphics that potentially could lend itself to that look and feel. That's what we got now.
All right. Do you want to go write the public comment?
Questions.
You have a question?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, is it our turn now?
Yeah.
Okay. I do have a question, sorry. First time. So I know that we have, we tabled, right, or it's off the table, the civic center redevelopment. I just am curious how this fits into that. Well, that, and I'm looking at you because I feel like it's probably more of a you question. There was a surplus land act issue that got in the way of us developing that. How does this impact that? And that plan was a little more comprehensive for the entire site. So I just wouldn't want us to do something that is only focused on that plaza area when then down the road, we're going to redo everything anyway.
And I think that, uh, that was partly my bad because, um, the, the other aspect of this is, you know, a new and rebranded city hall. I think City Hall could use an update. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this was an area that the community had some tolerance for some additional building heights. Um, I think residential or other uses could be explored here. So I think that the specific plan has an opportunity to deal with land use um, in a broad enough way that after Michael answers you, we can sort of sort out how to be flexible because it's a twenty-year plan.
So I, you know, I think the, the previous process where the city was looking at the redevelopment, uh, options for the civic center was a privatization of the civic center. The city would sell the land, uh, to the private developer and it would be redeveloped, city hall, police, fire, could, could not, may, may not be part of that redevelopment. But in essence, it would be a separate private development of the city sold. Um, even if it was a private-public partnership where the city was a partner in, in that process, there's a surplus land act that we would have to, uh, explore and navigate, which means, uh, these days, uh, the requirement is that we are required to offer the land for development of affordable housing to anybody who develops affordable housing as a first right of refusal. Uh, secondly, there's parks organizations, senior housing organizations that also get first rights of refusal. So, uh, between navigating the surplus land act, there's several other contingencies on this as private or as public land currently. Uh, there's a significant debt on the property, uh, that the city holds. And so when you look at current construction costs, you look at the current debt that is on the property, you look at, uh, what would pencil, uh, for a development at the end of the day, uh, without getting too nitty gritty, uh, what would pencil on a property like the civic center is a project similar in size and scope to Pacific Coast Commons? That's the closest thing I can sort of assimilate what would actually motivate anybody to come to El Segundo and develop in our, in our downtown, uh, with the civic center plaza with, with all those constraints. Um, so the decision was there wasn't a whole lot of appetite to explore that at this time. Uh, maybe there will be down the road. Uh, I would be interested to hear. Uh, I know that during our outreach, there was some feedback that there was interest in some redevelopment of the civic center, but for the most part, these two concepts is, is what was, the feedback was, was received, uh, was primarily about these two concepts.
So we're not going to go back down that road of declaring it surplus because the idea is this developer would create kind of, you know, retail or residential and when the state passed a law saying, no, it's all, you know, affordable housing.
What I mean, is that with the law? I don't know. I thought it was, they have first right of refusal, but you have to pay market value.
Yeah. But we would lose, we would lose control of it. Another developer would get to buy this land and build whatever they wanted and we'd be like, well, that's not what we want. So I, I, with this downtown plan, we, we can restructure things, but the land is never declared surplus. Does that make sense? So we have to do it ourselves. So my question is, how are we going to pay for this? If you build a parking structure there.
That's the next question.
People are still mad about the one by Good Stuff.
Yeah.
Right?
So I, as, as Jamie alluded to in the, in the early on in the, uh, the presentation, there is a implementation plan, uh, that will spell out the things that need to be done in order to effectuate, uh, this specific plan. One of those items is funding, where does the funding come from? How do we generate it? Uh, parking in Luffy, how does it get programmed? How's it get spent or prioritized? Uh, so again, it's a twenty-year plan. Uh, it doesn't happen overnight. The idea, like the parking in Luffy, is that we accumulate enough to do something with. Uh, and again, as it was alluded to earlier, uh, I don't know if we've actually done anything to implement the in Luffy, uh, or any programs from the in Luffy. So that's something that we do explore. Uh, we need, if we're not generating enough money from it to actually do anything with it, what's the point of collecting it? And, and so the alternative, how do we actually collect enough to actually do something with it?
Yeah, I, I think we did do angled parking on Richmond with some parking lieu money, right? Yeah, it's probably before you got here. Let's open on public communication because we've got like, uh, two options here. So I'd like to get a poll if anyone's got a choice of the urban versus the green space. Bueller. Can you, you go ahead and step up and I'm happy to have a conversation with you.
Hi, I'm Chris Hall, I live, uh, on Mariposa, uh, down by Senator Street School. Um, I think it kind of depends on what's happening with the streets. Meaning like, is there going to be, are we going to make Main Street fewer than four lanes? Is there any thought given to walking street? Sounds great, just throwing it out there. Um, but so I think it depends, right? If you're going to have four major lanes and you're going to have, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
So until you know that, it's hard to know what I would want to do in a huge space next to it because I don't know how busy it's going to be, right? Um, it sounds, the version with the, the kind of like the extension of, um, the, uh, farmer's market sounds really cool on, if the setup is like farmer's market where we shut this whole thing down once a week and it seems to be totally fine and everyone's happy, right? Uh, then yeah, it makes sense. But if it's going to be open traffic all the time, then having a place that's not necessarily, right, stoppable, so to speak. There's nowhere, there's not near parking nearby, you're going to be, why not just go to El Gringo? That would be the question I would ask. So I don't, I think it's, one depends on the other.
Okay. Good input. Uh, any other comments in the room? What about on Zoom?
We have one on Zoom. It's Michelle Collins. You're going to unmute your mic.
Hi.
Hello.
Um, yeah, this is Michelle, I live, um, on Holly Street. And just my opinion would be, um, the green space, just to kind of reiterate some of the things Bridget was saying about, um, inspiring the community to, um, have better yards, giving them an example for that. And for me, the most important part is, um, saving water from just running down the street and actually collecting it since, uh, we have such a water problem. Um, trying to solve that issue citywide.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have to say my name again?
No, Mark.
Okay. Just in case, Mark Christian again. Um, also in favor of a green space, sort of an idea. I had a question though. I think, I don't have the context that it looks like you guys have on whatever the previous thoughts were on this civic center area, but someone mentioned it's indebted. We can't do what we want with it. Who, we owe money on our civic center?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I mentioned it. My name's Michael Allen. Uh, you said somebody, so I just wasn't sure. I was the one who mentioned it.
I know you two were talking, but I wasn't, I couldn't, somebody said debt and I went, what?
So there, yeah, so there's a bond debt on, on the property. I don't know the history, it goes back several, I think a few decades, or a couple decades. The city took out a bond, uh, that, on the property, uh, so we own, we owe on that bond debt.
Okay. To, to what degree for all of these plans? Because like, some of it is like, oh, Chevron owns a bunch of it. And then for some of it, we have bond and, you know, indentures that sort of cloud it. To what degree with the rest of the plans are things like that part of it that we have to kind of work through as part of this implementing the plan?
Well, most of it is private property, right? So what we're doing is we're saying, what can we do to change the zoning, change the land use? Land use to encourage somebody to come in and, you know, buy the, the Rite Aid area, that whole complex and build something that we get to design the parameters of as far as height, as far as what we want in the first floor. The last time we did the downtown plan, um, you know, the building they did right across from the tavern. They rebuilt that, but they add a lot of brick, a lot of glass, because those are requirements we added. If you're going to develop downtown, we want it to look like, kind of like Richmond Street, like the brick we have here. So that the whole area looks the same, looks copacetic, but those, that's private people doing that. So we get to kind of plan by changing zones and height things, but we rely on the private side of it to say, yes, this is exciting and this is what I want to bring to the table. Um, the civic center, even though it's indebted, that's within the city's control. So like redoing the lawn area or this concrete jungle out here, we can do that. But as far as everything else, we kind of make the plan and hope that someone comes along and brings it to life. Hope that explains it.
I'm getting very comfortable up here.
This is great. Pull up a chair right here, Bridget.
Uh, yes, the, the green space I really like. I, I, I had fun the couple of times there's been a gathering in there. I know that the kids do a, uh, costume kind of, um, competition in this space and having, you know, bringing people in there. And I guess the question is, do we want a gathering space or a parking space again, right? Is that what the question is?
No, because where the little, uh, yellow areas are, they're saying these will be gathering spaces. So we got that lawn, which is on the north of City Hall, which is right behind us here.
Right.
You know, you see a couple of dogs over there, but maybe there could be some benches or something else.
Right.
Something with the concrete area here. The parking is, you know, taking the parking lot that exists and building a parking structure.
Oh.
So that we've got more parking capacity so that that makes the rest of the area walkable. Maybe we don't need as many parking spots on Main if we've got a giant parking structure, right?
So I was, um, just doubling down on not coming in with your own personal vehicle. I have a couple of questions. Whatever happened to the scooters? When they came into El Segundo and everybody flipped their thing? And then we don't, we never saw the line again? I mean, is there a city ordinance against having scooters in El Segundo?
I believe there was, I, I.
It was a moratorium that was.
Yeah.
And, and I understand that change is difficult, but I think it's time to lean into these things that are just better for the environment. And part of that is everyone having their private electric bicycle, but also maybe having some kind of scooter option or bike share within the city or even bike share that is outside of the city that comes in. And in addition to that, people want to have the, um, the golf carts. You know, if there's going to be paid parking, maybe you don't have to pay if you have a golf cart. I mean, people want to have these and they're better for the environment and it'd be nice if they had like easier parking. Or, and it, my mom is one of the seniors in the senior housing and they have a dial-dial ride. And I'm like, ma, stop calling me. It's a dollar. But you know, if, if I don't want to walk because it's raining, but I want to come down for dinner, why don't my husband and I just get a dollar dial-ride and then maybe we'll walk home? You know, having those things. Or in the, um, parking structure, if there's a loop to where people can drop off conveniently and allow that, just, you know, if you do want to take an Uber in here or if you want to come for lunch, but you're, you know, you're working over there at Raytheon, but you want to come in here for lunch and you just get in an Uber and have an easy, convenient drop-off. More ways to, to, um, that may involve, you know, a scooter or a car or an Uber, but you don't have to bring your personal vehicle into downtown. That's.
All good points.
And, and that's what I was kind of alluding to when I was talking about the challenges of getting people here while, um, you know, reducing VMTs and Jay's a big proponent of it. And we all are big proponents of micro mobility, the, these kinds of things. So that's the biggest challenge. How do we get people here? And I think that the current sequel process is trying to get that. I don't know if they have it down right yet where they're focusing on VMT rather than, uh, a number of trips for approvals for to determine, uh, environmental impact. But I think this is something that we, I mean, if, if we can be in the forefront of this with our little community because we are kind of disconnected from where the, the employees currently go, where we're drawing employees. If we can be at the forefront of micro mobility and getting people here from alternative, uh, through alternative transportation, I think that would be absolutely fantastic. So I am agreeing with you.
Yeah. And I guess trying to bring this back to the two options here. Um, and, you know, I don't know that it's, it's one or the other, there might be hybrids of each, but what creates a vibrant place are people, right? Um, this concrete space out here has got to be the worst planned piece of property in the South Bay. And what a, what a great opportunity. I mean, it's such, so, so it's a gem that we, that we should think through properly. But it needs people and vibrancy. I mean, I love that farmer's market is here, but it is, you know, if you look at every farmer's market in LA, it's probably one of the smallest and one of the least attended. So what can we do to encourage more people to be here? And so that landscaping, um, this gentleman mentioned the four-lane streets, you know, if cars are buzzing back and forth. I mean, if COVID taught us anything, it was, maybe it's okay to shut down two lanes and put a bunch of, 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 of dining in the streets, parklets, if you will. And so suddenly we're okay. And so suddenly we're okay with that. So how can we encourage complete streets? How can we encourage more pedestrian usage? How can we uh, bring the bike lanes in? How can we kind of push the cars to the side and have a, a, a very livable, vibrant um, opportunity for pedestrians? But those pedestrians need things to do. They need restaurants, they, I mean, there's a reason that uh, Brew Port and um, Rockin' Brew's and Sausal kills it. That place feels vibrant because those people have things to do. So I think, I feel like we need to bring some of that this way. And whether that's a, you know, restaurants and, or more street uh, um, activity, more room on the sidewalks for, for uh, for music. I love just walking down here. Uh, Shephana has a live band out on, right in front of his, his shop now. Um, uh, Tabazon has live music and those things all really help. So whether it's restaurants or it's green space and a combination of each, I think that we need to do so much more to bring that vibrancy on.
Yeah, that's the imbalance between the kind of that side, uh, on the weekends, in the evening on the weekends, that side and in this side. And you know, I mentioned kind of this is kind of a, a dead zone that people would only walk through, right? If you look at the, the, the bottom right picture, that, that's the point. If we even had a green patch in the middle of this area over here, people could picnic. Versus having, you know, you know, I don't know how many, like seven or eight tables all on this side and it's just basically just flat concrete ground on this side. If we just put some sort of, you know, a full redevelopment would be very expensive, but uh, just even putting turf there would make a huge, huge.
It helps, but it needs programming too.
Exactly.
You know, it's uh, you know, you'll, some, someone will take their ice cream from half a block away and bring it here, and that's great, but not everyone will. So things that we can do to actually cause people to be here and hang out and linger. And you know, residential does that. You know, if you live right here, if this is where you, this becomes your, your front yard.
No, good points. I wanna explain VMT means vehicle miles traveled. It's like a sequoia term, just so we're on the same page. Uh, you have more public comment?
Can I just kind of comment, talking about that? What makes?
Sure.
What seems to make that area more vibrant, that little corner over there, is not only that the places are a little bit larger, but there's outside lighting. Just coming, I parked my car back there, it's completely pitched, you know, it was, wasn't dark yet, but the little, whatever you call them, festival lights. Not lights wrapped around trees, because that's not good for the trees. But festival lights, uh, they could change seasonally, but that kind of marks it as a place for a gathering place, a festive area.
Margaritas help too.
Yeah.
Okay, margarita, margarita card. All right. Yeah.
I'm just gonna add, so I live all the way on the east corner of Maple and close to PCH. So for us, vehicle access to the downtown is critical and parking, because we live a little too far to just walk.
Um, there is a Micro Mini, uh, if you've heard of that.
Yes.
But it's kind of like an Uber, it's like a bus and they'll drop you at certain locations. I think that's a dollar or two. We also used to have a downtown shuttle that would drive people from that side of PCH here. We've got the vehicles, we can't find anyone to drive them. That's what I've heard. So that's, that's since COVID, we, we can't fire someone with that license who wants to take that job. Uh, but we, that's something we can bring back pretty quickly, I would think. If we can find someone willing to drive that shuttle. But that was something that lured people from that side of PCH to our downtown. Okay. Yeah, if you're not at the microphone, no one can hear you. Even though I can totally hear you, I just have to tell you, if you're not at the microphone. Go ahead, Bridgette.
It has nothing to do with the plan, but that, that uh, that shuttle, if we could do that for the kids over to the um.
The beach shuttle?
The beach shuttle's great in the summer, but maybe in the wintertime, we can take them to the aquatic center or to those fields for after school activities.
Oh, you really don't wanna drive anyone anywhere, do you? You just laying it out there, that's great. Uh, so for the two options, I, I kinda like the open green space. Um, we need shade in this area, cause when you're judging Halloween costumes, you were there. Like you're just standing in the sun. Um, but I think if we had a, a green space, uh, even if it's like what they did at Manhattan Beach, where it's fake grass, but they've got nice plants and benches, then that, maybe the Farmer's Market can kind of go into that area and, and include Main Street and the Civic Center. So it's more of a inclusive area. But I like doing something with the lawn, um, and it looks like what is now parking. If you build that parking structure, you'll have more of a gathering space at the corner of Grand and Main. And that is also a dead area right now. I mean, we used to have these terrible bushes, now we just have a parking lot. So yeah, that's my two cents. I'm, I'm leaning towards more of a green gathering space that can be converted for Farmer's Market. And it does need lights, that's also a good point.
Yeah, and, and I guess I just wanna say again, the green space is awesome. I mean, that's what I do for a living, but it's gotta be activated. And so um, the reason the green space works at the point is it's surrounded by things that you can buy and eat and consume. And the reason it works in Manhattan Beach is you're surrounded by those things that um, you know, cause people to, to wanna be there. You know, uh, no offense to Chipton Ross across the street, but it need, you know, it needs, that help, that, those spaces need to help activate this. So that's a, we need to make sure that, that we provide the zoning that can encourage those sorts of uses.
Yeah, I'm, I agree. I reiterate all of it. My question about that original development plan was because to exactly that, that would activate that area. And without that, I think it just emphasizes how much everything on the other side of Main Street needs to be the dining entertainment area. I wouldn't want to cannibalize that by making our civic plaza the dining entertainment area. I think we need to give some life to that so that a green space is active and has people there.
All right.
Chair Baldino.
We have another Zoom?
Back up.
What's that?
Michelle, you can unmute your mic.
Okay.
Thanks, I just wanted to chime in on the funding. I know that um, if you put in a native landscape at your house, that you get a rebate from, I believe, the Water District. Um, so I don't know if that would apply, but might be a way to pay for a little bit of this.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving along.
Thank you, good comments. So, you're gonna love this. This is all about the program, the streets, the mobility, transportation. Um, we are giving you some key concepts tonight. The specific plan will have a dedicated chapter for the districts and the land uses. It'll have a dedicated chapter um, for mobility. So we will be exploring and our traffic engineers are part of our team that are exploring many of the concepts you guys discussed today. Shuttles, bikes and the like. We're not presenting all of that tonight, but we are talking about some options for the right of way and looking at some different alternatives that we could do a deeper dive into if any of them resonate with you. The plan will also have a chapter dedicated to infrastructure and analysis on your sewer, water um, and public utilities, um, as well as placemaking and the implementation chapter. So I just am telling you that because a lot of those things, we, we don't have time to go through tonight, but that will be covered in the old, in the ultimate specific plan. So, this graphic is our opportunities and constraints um, analysis. We, we, you'll see here that the green dots are areas where you could have primary gateways. Um, signage, welcoming, one of the key areas is on Grand on the north side. The circular yellow, um, the, the yellow circles indicate areas where you could provide better enhanced pedestrian crossings and connectivity. Um, the teal that's on Grand and Main is really looking and exploring these right of way things that I'm about to present to you, as well as enhancing the streetscape with benches and street trees and, and updating the paving and um. There's an orange area that I talked about when we talked about the districts. There's a significant um, topography there that could be explored. And then there's these squiggly lines that highlight opportunities in the alleys. And one of the things that we found out through our um, discussions with the school is that there is that, an alley that's um, it's right below the butterfly lane alley sign, but that blue squiggly line, that is a major corridor for your high school kids. And it is dark and it is not very firm. And we see that as an opportunity to really enhance that and create a pedestrian connection there with maybe lighting or other things. It's, it's a bunch of garage doors, so it won't impact. But um, so we're gonna in the plan, explore neighborhood alleys, which are the blue, and then more commercial alleys. Marketplace alley is definitely your loading and your service area. And so looking at ways to beautify, maybe consolidate trash and do other things to keep it a service opportunity, but also enhance it. So those are just a few of the items that we are looking at um, as part of the plan. Um, additional lighting um, in all of your streets or in some of the primary streets is another thing that we're looking at and it was mentioned earlier tonight. Um, these are just some concepts, uh, other areas that have integrated gateway signage. So where that would happen and what that might look like will be explored. Okay, so, we're going into some parking, some technical stuff. My traffic engineer's not here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what I know. And, and uh, take comments if there's some questions, we'll be happy to respond at a later date. We did a preliminary parking analysis and the green is good and the red is not so good. Um, the left side shows existing weekend utilization, whereas the right side shows existing weekday utilization. The truth is, it's not that bad. There's a lot of opportunity for parking. Um, it's just, you know, you might not be able to park right in front of the store you wanna go to, but you can walk one block and you're there. So it's, you're in pretty good shape today. This again, is not what we're proposing. This is just looking at a more comprehensive parking management plan. What could make it better and easier? It could be exploring things like meters. It could be exploring a better shared parking program. Your shared parking program at the city is pretty restrictive. It's something that really doesn't incentivize any shared parking. So exploring how that might be modified, I think is important. Um, as well as previously mentioned, just providing better wayfinding on how to find the parking. Um, exploring alternatives for potentially a couple of additional parking structures long-term is something that it could be proposed. So then we took a deep dive and this is the last section, but we really dug into what could happen on your primary corridors. And how do you create a space that is friendly for bikes and for people and for cars? And how, and you need to also recognize that a downtown that is popular, that people go to, isn't a large, fast-moving, multiple lanes going through it. The idea is not to rip on through downtown, but to, to stop and slow down and explore. So with that, we took a stab with our traffic consultants um, at some potential options. And we, and I'm gonna go through them all and then I'm gonna pause and I'm gonna show them to individually and get some feedback, but maybe from you guys first and then we can kind of do. Um, so, the left is what's there today. Main Street um, has uh, four trap, two travel lanes in each direction. The bikes are sharing the road and there's parking on either side with 12 foot side, um, sidewalks. Um, option A would be including a, what's called a cycle track or an isolated bicycle lane on one side and converting to diagonal parking on the other side. That's one option. Option B would be providing class two bike lanes on either side, keeping the, maintaining the parallel parking, putting bike in a buffered lane and then again, reducing it down to one lane in each direction, travel lane in each direction. Uh, that's, those are the two options that we are looking at for Main Street. Now I'm gonna go through two more streets. Um, Grand Avenue is, and we're talking about Maine to Concord. So we're not talking about the beautiful ficus trees, we love the trees. We're talking about the area that's pretty, in my opinion, has room for improvement. It's where you have parking in the middle of the street. You have a, a, a concrete median and you have two travel lines on the other side and you have parking on the other side. So um, we've come up with a couple of different alternatives for that area as well. The first alternative would be, again, a cycle track, a dedicated um, bike lane, diagonal parking, um, two lanes of travel instead of four, and a landscaped median. So you're continuing that continuity of the ficus trees to being a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and, and landscaped. And, and diagonal parking area, I'm not sure if I said that. Option P would have angled parking in the center with an, a single lane of travel and then parallel parking. So you're still maximizing the parking on that street. Having parking in the middle of two travel lanes is not ideal in my opinion, but if parking is really that big of an issue, then this alternative would maintain the most amount of parking. And then the third option, um, again, is bringing back that central green median and creating bike lanes on the other side with parallel parking on the other side. So those are three alternatives for Grand. And then the last street is Richmond. Um, Richmond has diagonal parking on one side and a travel lane in each direction and parallel parking. You could, this is the segment that's closed today. So do you want to bring it back to the way it was, which is on the left? Do you wanna explore something that is a little bit more um, pedestrian friendly, where you could expand the sidewalks to larger sidewalks? And you could create sort of a central median uh, in the middle? Or you can expand the sidewalks, you know, alternative B, and provide a place for outdoor dining and parklets? Or, but you'd lose your diagonal parking? Or you could go all in and redesign it, but in a permanent way. Get rid of the crazy orange stuff and like, do it right. So those are your three options for Rich. And I, I wanna get some feedback, but I have a little cheat sheet here for you for each alternative um, to get your, your input.
Can I kick it up?
Go ahead.
So, so you know, you did mention like, you know, you don't, you don't wanna zip through your downtown speeding down the street. And I think that, that could almost be the said for, for biking, right? I'm more concerned about bike access getting to the downtown area than getting through the downtown area. I would rather use that spot for congregating or, people can walk their bikes that couple blocks where it is. I think it's a better use of space. I don't think people will be zipping through those areas um, frequently. So it'll be better used if, if people, if people can expand their businesses, you know, have outdoor seating or, you know, have pocket parks or, or, or what have you. I think that um, and, and that's for, for, for Maine primarily. For, for Richmond, I think um, the second, was it B or, or C? Then that would be my preferred option. I think that we've learned that we can do without having access to that. And I think that there's so much opportunity there, at least in that area along Richmond. Um, just because that, I think that people have become now accustomed to it after a couple of years. And like I said, we've learned to live without it, so it's up there.
Are you saying no bike lane on Main Street at all?
I mean, I, they can share, they can share the road on, on Main Street, I think. Because it's, it's not, you don't have to zip through that area. Or you, I mean, there, you can go down to different ways or walk down, um, so you have more foot traffic. Um, but I don't, I think that a designated lane at all times wouldn't be as utilized if you're just kind of going through Main Street.
And that comment opens up an opportunity to really look at this again with expanded sidewalks and other things, more pedestrian focused.
Right.
How, how does that work when you've got a dedicated bike lane to cross over for parking?
You're talking about version A.
Uh, on the right there, B.
B, where you've got a bike lane and then you park, parallel park.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of precedent for that in, in elsewhere in LA. It's, it's got, Santa Monica, um, Main Street in Santa Monica has that condition.
That feels very dangerous, doesn't it?
Well, it, it, it.
Yes.
It can be. I mean, the, the green lane is critical. The fact that it's painted green is really important.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a visual reminder to those people that are parking there, that uh, they have to look. It's a, it's a visual reminder to those people that are parking there that, uh, they have to look.
Santa Monica, yeah.
Yep.
I personally always been a fan of the diagonal parking on Main Street. I think that that is a, you could get more parking there. And it feels a, a little more villagey-like almost. It kinda creates a different ambiance.
Yeah, I agree. Now, uh, the question about parking in bike lane is really good because I was originally thinking we were going in a Copenhagen direction, which I kind of love, that you have a bike lane and a barrier and that's, that's it. And just as a mom with kids who are on those bikes and they maybe shouldn't be, but on the electric bikes, I mean, they, it is, Main Street, even in that section, is just super hazardous. Um, so I'm not opposed to a bike lane, but yeah, I can't get my head around how you park it that way.
Well, it's no different than what it is right now. I mean, right now there are sharos and sharos are kind of the, you know, the least you can very, the, the very least you can do when it comes to, to bike lanes. And the, and the truth is, any bike is allowed on a road already. The sharos is just a visual reminder that, hey, there might be bikes here. But I mean, right now you have sharos in the right-hand lane next to parking. So it's exactly like version number two. It's just now version two has a green stripe in the way. And they take away that, that lane for vehicles.
Right.
So, I mean, I, of those two, I mean, what you're gonna have in version one is you're gonna have people making U-turns into the parking.
True, yeah.
Um, it's true.
You're gonna have people that still ride their bikes on the opposite side of the road, even though you got a cycle track there. Um, so, you know, I, my preference is, uh, is option B because I just think it's the most, um, it, it's the easiest thing for people to get their heads around when they're, when they're riding on Main Street.
But, but do you see a lot of bike riders on Main Street, though? Like that, that would necessitate its own bike lane?
And hopefully every day we see more.
Well, I, I'm, I wanna see a lot of bikes going to Main Street, not necessarily on Main Street.
Yeah, well, my, my hope, Kevin, is that what you do is you create the infrastructure that people, that moms can say, you know what? Maybe it's okay for my kids to ride their bike to school. Right now, there's no way in the world I would let my kids ride the bike to school. My kids are 30 and I wouldn't let them ride to school. But, but the point being is that there's no bike infrastructure now. So by creating the infrastructure, you start to change traffic behaviors. And you change consumer behaviors. You change behaviors of people who are more comfortable now on a bike. So it's not, uh, you know, one begets the next.
No, no, I, I agree with you 100% that, that we, we need to change like the, the, the car culture here. I'm just talking about around these like two specific blocks. Do we need to block out all of that for? Or we say no biking, walk your bike during this area?
You bring up a really good point. Well, the question about, um, Grand, Main Street to Concord, is that one block you're talking about? Or is that other blocks? Yeah, so it was, uh, Grand.
This one, Grand, yes.
So Maine to Concord, is that two blocks?
I think it's, I don't know, I think it's three.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, one of the things, as a professional trails designer and, and bike lane designer, one of the things that we try to do is have a consistent experience. You know, if Grand Avenue is one condition for a mile and then all of a sudden it's three blocks of this and then it goes back to some, back to something else, it's a little weird, you know? So you wanna have as consistent a, as an experience as possible. So I don't know that I would go to this expense to have these green bike lanes for three lanes, or three, three blocks, rather, and then go back to just a single, uh, painted stripe on the road. The painted stripe is great, don't get me wrong, uh, you know.
He just wants more of it.
That's exactly right.
Have these bike lanes been overlaid with our South Bay Master Bike Program that we approved years and years ago?
When you say overlaid, are, are you asking if it's consistent with that?
They, they are consistent, yeah. I, I looked at that early on.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's really hard for me to uncouple my brain to think about what I would choose and how much it costs. And I've learned a couple of things over the last few weeks. Nobody wants paid parking anywhere in the city. And nobody wants, well, I shouldn't say nobody, but it's hard to say how we would go about raising money for this sort of improvement. So does that ever factor into this conversation? I mean, is there a less expensive version? What is, is doing this gonna be the same cost across the board? How do we make sure that we're planning for something that is our most cost-effective option as well?
You know, the, the plan to introduce the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan in El Segundo, and just using bicycles as a example here because you're talking about a complete street, uh, reconfiguration. The plan was anytime a street gets resurfaced, it needs new striping. It needs new paint. And then it was just a matter of, alright, well, now we're gonna paint these things in. And I wonder if, if, if that kinda mentality still works? You know, as streets need resurfacing, the right-of-way is the same. There's no new furniture in the middle. Well, I guess there are for some of these options. But if, if there's a simple version where it's just paint and some lighting, uh, you're right, it still costs money. So what, but, but I think that there's probably, uh, reasonable ways to implement those things.
I do think by having a plan, um, you're positioning yourself better for outside funding. You know, whether it be grants or other opportunities.
Yeah, just, just to, uh, anecdotally add to that, I, most of our capital improvement projects are funded through non-city funds. They're all federal or state funding sources. And so the, the goal tonight is to figure out what you prefer so that we can then plan and, and try to figure out how these things are funded. Uh, but, but to Jamie's point, it, it puts us in a position to seek additional funds. There's, there's, there's gas tax funds and Measure M funds that are all programmed every year. We know what those funds are. And then we, there's ways that we can monetize that and use it as leverage to go after additional funding sources through the state or the federal government. Uh, and if we don't have a plan like this in place, it's very hard to compete, uh, for, for those grants and those programs. Uh, but tonight the goal is to identify what your priorities are, uh, so that we can then take this conversation to the next step. And I, I'd just add to that master bike, uh, plan question, there's also the local travel network that needs to be overlaid with this, which is the, uh, uh, local travel network is the accommodation of bike sharos for, or sharos for electric vehicles, that'd be scooters, bikes, the golf carts, uh, anything of, of that nature. And so that, the local travel network overlays both with Main Street and Grand. And so that would be also something that we need to consider for, for these plans.
And do, do all the plans or do any of the plans take into consideration the widening of the sidewalk so that that could be dining space or?
A little rich with dairy.
Yeah. So I, maybe I could just answer a couple of your questions because I think you raised some good points. And, um, it is more expensive to redo curb, gutter and sidewalks. However, as, um, Mr. Allen was saying, it is kind of the vision of the plan too. So if you're trying to promote pedestrian connectivity, but you can also phase it. So the plan can make recommendations on restriping today and when there's enough money, this is plan B. I also wanna say that the feedback that I've received tonight is great and it may not be choosing one of these alternatives. It may be taking a third look, you know, at, well, if we don't necessarily create dedicated bike lanes in here, but we create other opportunities or we find areas where bike lanes might be, um, available on adjacent streets, you know, we have more opportunity to explore. We wanted to come to you with some preliminary concepts to get this kinda feedback. You don't feel like you have to necessarily pick what you want, but the elements that you want in each will help us craft another sort of refined plan.
Um, so right on Grand here by the police station where we have all those trees? And there's parking underneath?
Yes.
Nobody parks there. You park there once and there's so many crows in those trees, you can never park there again. So, so think about that because if you have parking and trees, they don't, they don't go hand in hand. It's, it's funny, one of our meeting minutes from 2015 was about this downtown subcommittee that, that Jay was on, we pulled you on that. And one of the issues that came up was parking. What can we do about parking? And what we learned is we had someone from the police come in and they said, well, we've got two-hour parking restrictions. Um, but if the, like the dog walker, this dog guy is busy, like they didn't have anyone who was enforcing parking downtown during lunch. Um, I agree with Michelle, meters are, are not a direction that this city is, I think, has the stomach to entertain. But I, I do know from that experience in 2015 that there was a problem just with enforcing the two-hour limit now and, and trying to keep cars moving. So that might be something we should, we should look at. Um, and then did we do any, uh, calculations on, you know, plan A will net five more spots, we'll lose 10 spots here? Okay, let's.
Not to that level of detail yet.
Yeah, that would be interesting to know because, um, I, as I, I do agree COVID has taught us parking is not as important as we thought it was. We still have to supply some parking, um, because cars are not going anywhere. We don't have jetpacks yet. We're not gonna give them anytime soon. So it's, it's a necessary evil that we have to plan for.
Can we agree that that option B with the parking in the middle, though, is the least desirable?
Yeah, that looks like chaos. Like, do I pull forward there?
You have your choice. You can do whatever you want.
You just go.
Too many choices.
Yeah, and then you go straight down the wrong way, right?
But so this is, okay, this is Grand Avenue. Can we look at Maine?
Yeah.
So all these plans are one, one way, one, two, two streets on Maine.
Two lanes.
Two lanes.
Right.
Right, so we're getting rid of the four Maine, which I think we really have to if you wanna get people walking on Maine.
And again, if we were having this discussion three years ago, people, you know, there'd be flaming pitchforks in the room.
Oh, yeah.
But the fact that, that we went down to two lanes during COVID and suddenly everyone was okay with that, I feel like, alright, let's pause. And now with that mentality, can we improve the pedestrian thoroughfare here?
Yeah, I know Santa Monica is maintaining their outdoor dining, letting them convert parking into parklets. But I think they're dinging them for a hefty amount for sewage. So there's gonna be a cost if we lose parking. If it's the parking loo fee of, what's that, 18 grand a spot, if I recall? Like, I don't know how many businesses are gonna pay us 18 grand to put a couple tables in a parking spot. So I, I think if you're looking at overhauling, then we, we have to look at the parking loo. Is it working? Uh, is it, is it the way forward? Or we have to decide what's more important? Um, parking and loo or actually getting a plan that we want?
Yeah, and if a restaurant is getting this great benefit of having this additional square footage, I mean, there's a benefit to the restaurant. You know, what, what, is that, is that a flat fee for that? In, in exchange for that parking lot or is it a parking space? You know, what's, what's the right equation? What's the right amount to bill the restaurant for that?
Oh, I know someone who wanted to do a rooftop deck and they did, they scrapped it because they wanna pay the, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars for parking spaces that don't exist.
Wow, yeah, free street.
Right.
Dining.
Yeah.
If I could refine my, my first statement, I think, I, I do, I do think it'd be beneficial to get it down to two lanes to maximize that extra space because we don't need the four lanes. I, I, I think Jay thinks that it should be a bike path. I think it should be used for pedestrians or congregating, but I guess it's irrelevant. I think that we do agree that, you know, we could do better, you, make better use of that space than having an extra lane there.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, traffic calming is good.
Exactly, yeah.
If somebody says, oh my God, I'm gonna be late for work. Well, you slow down five miles an hour and it just kinda changes everything and you're really not that late for work.
But using it for, uh, parklets and things like that versus a bike lane does contribute to the liveliness of the area, right? Whereas people passing through.
That's true.
Should we open it up for the public? I wanna hear more about the butterfly. I'm in, I'm in. Native plants everywhere. You sold me. See what happens when you show up to a meeting? Anyone have any comments on the parking and traffic?
Is there any consideration of one-way streets?
In Smokey Hollow, there are.
Stare her down. You gotta talk to us.
Well.
What do you mean, like a Main Street would go one-way?
Yeah. Yeah, that would, uh, that would just simplify things. If, you know, obviously there's gotta be something that goes the other way.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. If there is an equal, I guess, thoroughfare and, that could go the opposite way. But I don't think that, that Richmond or Standard are, are, are those to, to Main Street.
But what is that alley behind, that runs parallel to Maine?
Chaos.
That the kids use?
Yeah, you, you wouldn't use that. And we have like circulation demands from the state on what we need as far as cars. And trust me, Bridget, there are people who are not here who are gonna lose their minds if we go from four to two.
Oh, guaranteed.
Right.
Guaranteed. And then I, I, I mean, that's why I just asked, just kinda throwing all kinds of things out there.
Okay.
I was actually gonna one step further and suggest zero lanes.
On Main Street? Or where?
I was, oh, yeah. You know, it's funny, and so tonight I was coming here and I don't, I usually bike when I'm in town, but I, I work over by the Point and I was driving here to come. And I forgot that the farmer's market was here, so I was coming up Maine. I, oh, I can't go there. And I took a complicated system. I, I drove around and parked over here and then I walked here and it turned out okay. And every single week we shut it down. We shut it down for frolics. We shut it down for, I mean, we shut it down all year. It gets shut down. What?
Shut it down hard.
So I, I think the question is, how is it okay to shut it down? I don't know. Call it 80, 90, 100 times a year, but the other two-thirds of the year, we can't? I think that's a, I, 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 I think a real question i- in my mind. I would say if we're gonna keep it going, I would, as much as I bike everywhere, e-bike all the time, me and my wife do, we don't really drive in town. I'd agree with, um, Kevin, that I'd rather not have the bike lanes and have really wide sidewalks and be able to, uh, bike along. And it is terrifying to me to think that someone would be par- I know you're saying, Jay, that that's the normal thing. But it's a terrifying thought that I'm biking along and with my kids on the back of the bike and someone's like trying to parallel park and then they stop and then there's backed up traffic because there's, but I don't know.
It's, it's an imperfect system.
Yeah, and I would kind of agree that I don't think the goal is for people to go through is to stop, right? That's what we're trying to, uh, encourage. And in some ways, going from two lanes to one lane seems like it'd be more of a challenge than just kinda saying, hey, we're gonna stop from Mariposa to Grand and say this whole area is open for, almost like a Third Street promenade, but more small-town vibe-y. Um, so I, I would also say that parking is overrated, um, just in general. I know people disagree with that, but we're trying to meet two groups, right? The people to bring in here to do, to, you know, from out of town or from out of the area to come spend their money here. I assume that's one part of the group. That group, I think in general, I mean, think about like, take Third Street for example. You have to park on the ends and then walk for, I mean, there, it's like miles, right? And people do it. They're happy to do it and I think they would do that. And if we had, you know, some way to transport them, even better. And local people, well, certainly there are some who are living further away, like 80, 90% of the population here is walkable or bikeable to downtown. And so I think excess parking is just kind of, I don't know who it's demand it's meeting, is what I'm saying. And I think it'd be easier if it's more walkable, more kind of pedestrian, not just pedestrian friendly, but family-friendly. I think about this area being a green space. If this whole street were blocked off, you could come with your kids and like just sit at a random restaurant and let them run wild like you do at the Point and we'll see you in half an hour. And they bump into their friends and their, their parents are eating a different restaurant and everyone's just kinda hanging out. There's this huge community vibe that I think any cars and certainly more cars or faster bikes or lots of parking, you just lose that. I can't let my kids go away from me, even if the streetwalks, sidewalks are wider because I can't have them, right, crossing the street, going back and forth, even with two lanes. So team zero lanes. I realize it's gonna be an unpopular opinion, I'm going for it.
We're just ripping the band-aid all the way off.
I know. I have lost all control. This is the best meeting. This is fantastic. Um, we're gonna have to ask, I know businesses like parking next to their businesses, so that's, that's a big part of it. If you close down that street, oh, he's coming back.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's a trade-off, right? So businesses also like people walking by their storefronts.
Yeah.
So to the extent that you had a totally, all this is walkable, then yeah, you have, there's parking on the ends, but once you're here, you're a captive audience, right? You're not going anywhere. And not only that, like, think how many times you go out to dinner with your family and your kids and one kid's like, I wanna eat this, I wanna, I wanna eat that. And whatever else, you're like, oh my gosh, you're just fighting with them as opposed to saying, you know, I don't know that, that, what, what, that's El Segundo, but across the, the street that has like the Five Guys and the, um, Rubio's, whatever, we go there all the time because you don't have to fight about it. Just pick one of the five restaurants and we'll all meet in a central area. If you did the same thing here, you'd get a lot of business from someone who's like, oh, I was gonna go to El Gringo, but oh, it's too crowded. I guess I'll just walk across the street and eat at this restaurant. Whereas you won't, you, you know what I'm saying?[1749.88] There's, I think you can exchange those two things, um, if everyone is in a walking space.
Yeah, I get it. But let me ask you, when you ride your electric bikes, are you on the sidewalk or on the street?
On the street.
Okay, they're not allowed on sidewalks, are they?
No. I'm only on the sidewalk to like park, because there's like parking stuff there. You might hop up on the curb for a second to park it, but no, it's always on the streets. Um, and I, but I would be happy if there was bike parking on the ends of, you know, my hypothetical shutdown street from Mariposa to Grand.
So like a little?
Yeah, just like.
Large biking rack?
Yeah, exactly. That would, and then would be happy to walk up and down all of it. Um, it's just, I guess I would say that I cannot think of a single situation in any city, at any time, at any place where they took away driving and created a more walkable space and 10 years later, later, people were mad about it. There's no history of that. In the moment, people are mad about it, because people are mad about anything. Anytime you change something, it's, oh, right, I'm sure you guys are going to get, whatever you do, people are going to be mad.
Yeah, look at Times Square in New York. They took, they closed it down and people freaked out. And now it's like the, one of the most popular places ever.
I mean, at some point in time, they shut down Third Street in Santa Monica. I imagine there were pitchforks then. And now it's like, if you imagine right now trying to add driving to Third Street, people would lose their minds, right? When we went from four lanes to two lanes, it was fine. People are just fine and someone's going to be mad. I'm not suggesting no one will be, but I, I would challenge you to think of a single place anywhere in the history of like modern society where they shut down things and made it walkable and people were mad about it 10 years later. You guys would be heroes. Remember those, that group of people who created this unusual thing? I'm serious, like that's.
And saved the butterfly?
Yeah, saved the butterfly. And just think about how much different of a vibe it would be and how that's like, I know it sounds dumb, but I'm, I'm serious. Like you're, it's easy to think about how mad people are going to be are in the moment when you make the change and forget like, does, no one's ever been really excited that there was more street parking 10 years later, right? But people are really excited that there was more walking and more community and more freedom for their kids to run around and more opportunities to go to restaurants. And if I was building a restaurant, I'd love to build in a place where I knew that people were always going to be walking around, right? Weekdays, weekends, no matter what, there's always walk traffic, right?
There's always an opportunity. To pay too, though, for a transition, a 10-year tran- transition for businesses along corridors like this, though. There's a bit of a price to pay.
I'm, I'm not saying there's not. And I, I'm not suggesting it's as easy as just like, well, just kind of put something up and now there's no way to drive, right? I'm not saying it's that simple and obviously there's lots of moving parts and you guys are experts.
I think the fiscal or financial, uh, it really needs to be considered for, for these, for these businesses along here.
Don't disagree.
Yeah.
And there's always going to be winners and losers, right? I'm simply suggesting that if the goal is to maintain a small town character feel and to also attract.
It also depends on what you want. I mean, if you just want parklets and parks for kids to play or do we want vibrant, where businesses will, will be attracted to come? Because it is a transition. If you, if you turn it into an absolutely walk-only street, that's a bit of a transition. That's like an open, that's kind of like just simply an open mall area, isn't it?
Well, and, and it's a great point, Brenda. The reason Third Street Promenade works, it's not just a green space. I mean, it's surrounded by retail. It's surrounded by retail and restaurants and things, it's back to the activation thing.
Right.
And so, so you, you, I, I, uh, I'm a huge fan of walk streets and pedestrian only. Um, what's, what's the, the day, the Dutch word for a, a street? Uh, when it's?
Nine streets.
Yeah, yeah.
Streets.
Something's, it's trying to. Yeah, yeah, a- a- anyway, that's the, that's the concept in Europe there and I'm a huge fan of it. Um, you just got to pick the right place to do it. So that's, and, and I don't know that it's Main Street right now, but.
I think it's a wood nerf.
Your head's up.
A wood nerf or something like that?
Yeah, vun- vun nerf.
Wood nerf, I think.
Vun nerf, right.
I'm just suggesting that it's worth it to think big.
Right.
Because I think it's cool on Richmond, but if you think about just, okay, so I'm on, I'm on Main Street and I'm driving around and then how am I even going to get to Richmond? I'm going to go down this kind of weird little one block and then I'm going to hook a left, but how? There's nowhere to, I'm just saying, it's been fine. And I'm not, not enjoying slice and pie in that whole area being open. But that's just, that's just like such a narrow space. You can only really fit three or four, maybe five restaurants on either side. You're talking about a really small area. And I think a lot of us just, that's, it's more representative outdoor dining than it is a walking street really at this point.
True.
And I, I know that it's easy to think incrementally. That's the natural and it's the lower risk option. And, and I know there would be costs, et cetera. I'm just saying, maybe consider, what if we made this whole area just a vibrant center that people would want to come to and hang out in for hours? Whether you're with kids running around, whether you're teenagers looking for a place they're not going to get by a car, whether you're adults who want a beer and be left alone, right? Whatever it might be, I think, yes, you have to activate it, but there's a bigger opportunity, I think, than just Richmond or just putting in bike lanes.
I agree, all those funky parking spots. I go to the parking structure over at the, um, Good Stuff just because I know how to, it's just kind of muscle memory and I go to the top and I walk all the way down. And so the parking structures can be, you know, when I go to Third Street Promenade, I know I'm going to go into one of those parking spots. I'm going to pay and then I'm just going to walk around. And so the, um, the parking over by Library Park, if you bookend it with these parking structures and maybe even opened it up as a regular street during the mornings, but then as soon as school lets out, you close the street for every evening. I mean, like you said, it closes most of the time. And so that you ha- you can kind of, um, uh, test the waters, you know, more and more about closing it off. And then you have, maybe we build those parking structures at the bookend so that you know where you're going, you can park. And then in most of the day, it's closed to through streets. Um, yeah, I, 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 I think that's a great idea.
Uh, any comments on Zoom, Venus? Okay, let's keep moving. Oh, wait, we got a late comment. Okay.
Um, I think, I just wanted to, I'm one of the moms whose kids live far away and we walk or bike into downtown. Um, and I just wanted to second that, like, if we're biking into downtown or on that Main Street, we're coming up on a backstreet, like, we aren't biking on that street anyway. And I would love to see, if you're reclaiming space from driving lanes, I would love to see more outdoor area that people can congregate in than, um, you know, using those two lanes that we're getting back for, um, designated bike lanes and keeping the sidewalks kind of the same space. So I would love to see more outdoor dining as well and congregating space on that Main Street.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I agree to your point. If we just have four blocks with a bike lane, it doesn't seem to make any logical sense. Um, and I think that area could be used better, even if it's not associated with a restaurant, just to have a sitting area. You know, a, a, a green space or benches or something where people can gather, kids who have nothing better to do. Because that little circle across from Starbucks is always packed with junior high kids. Right, it's just a tree and cement seats and that's it. But it's, their parents aren't there and they love it. So more spaces like that could, could be very useful.
Great. Well, thank you all for your comments.
That's it?
That's it.
Oh.
We're just getting started.
Wait, this is so essential.
We're on the way to be legends here.
Wonderful. Paul welcomes you to email him, anyone in the public, any of the additional thoughts or ideas. We went through a lot of information. I think we got a lot of great direction though, uh, that'll help us as we start to craft the plan. Um, and we will see you guys again through that process. We're also, just for your, the folks that are listening and in the room, we do have a project website. We update it regularly. This meeting will be on it as well as, you know, some of the preliminary concepts. So with that, we thank you very much.
Thank you for all the time you've put into this and the way you've presented it was, was excellent. You know, you kind of boxed it up so we can understand, talking point, talking point. And you've definitely energized the crowd here, so. Thanks for bringing the hype to the planning commission. We needed it.
Definitely. Can, can I ask, what, what, what happens next? Where, where do you guys go?
We are going to refine these concepts and start crafting different segments of the plan. We're heading into the holidays where it's better for us to be in the office doing our stuff than trying to engage and distract folks. And then we come back, um, later, sort of, I think, wintertime, like January, February, March, and bring back some additional ideas. We will come, I don't know if we're coming back to you guys before the hearings, but there will be public drafts available. There'll be opportunities for people to provide additional comments and reactions, um, throughout the next phase.
Perfect.
So there's an additional public input phase based on some of these things? Because I think this is the first time we saw these graphics tonight, right?
Right.
So does the, was this the opportunity for the public to now respond? Or is there another forum where?
I would say.
Sticky dots and things like that.
No, we're not doing that anymore. This is really the launching pad for, we've done so much engagement that that's really what crafted this. And then this was an opportunity to sort of truth test, are we going in the right direction? Um, we, as I said, over the next few months, if people want to share their thoughts on these, because these will be posted, um, they can send emails or, or provide additional information. But the idea is this was just an opportunity to say, okay, are we on the right track? Let's go write something. And then we'll start putting more specific development standards together. We'll put some more specific, we'll look at some alternatives for these roadway improvements. We'll look at a design concept for the Civic Center that integrates more open space, but activated spaces as well. So we're going to take all of this feedback and, and, and craft the plan.
And then does this go, is this a, a complete written document as well? That's the specific plan?
Yes.
And is that what then goes to, comes back to us or goes to city council?
Yes, it comes back to you and then city council.
Gotcha.
So we'll have a public review draft. Once that public review draft is available, we'll also be doing the sequo, the EIR process. Um, and so that public review draft will be posted and available for people to review and comment on. Um, and then we will, um, bring a public hearing draft and you guys will be the first ones to have a bite at the apple. And then you'll make some recommendations or simply bless it and then we'll move on.
Can we, uh, publish this PowerPoint?
Yes, we intend to do that, yep. So in the next, uh, couple of days, we'll make sure to put that on our webpage.
Yeah, or you, maybe even send an email because this has a lot more information. Before it was a survey and now like this is some concrete examples. When people see it, you might get more feedback when they see, oh, I hate angled parking or whatever it is.
Yeah, that's a terrific idea.
That this was recorded as well, so I think there's an opportunity to, for people to even watch it.
They're all recorded. Trust me, they're all recorded.
And I think that we may, I'm going a little off script here, but based on the feedback on the roadways and the right of way, we probably will go back and explore some additional alternatives and maybe post those as well. Because I think you guys provided some really good input.
Yeah, I mean, are there versions where you don't, I, I don't remember what the, how wide those bike lanes are, but I mean, are there versions where there's maybe a smaller bike lane, but there's room for more sidewalk dining? You know, is there, is there a kind of a, of a push and pull there?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, and, and, and if I may too, I'd just encourage, um, you know, everyone online and, and also in the public to, to register, um, on the website to, uh, get updates. So that way, when things are posted, you know, we'll send out a, a blast email and that way you can see what's being posted and, and, and comment that way. Uh, we have a, a page dedicated to, to this effort, so, you know, visit that quite often, uh, for updates as well. Uh, we'll, like, like you mentioned, Chair, um, great idea, we'll have this put on the website. And I think we'll try to also put a link to this meeting directly on that webpage as well.
Great.
One question, is RRM doing this, uh, Smoky Hollow update as well?
We tried. Way to just pour some salt in that one.
Sorry, I was hoping that you, I was hoping.
They're more downtown people.
Not Smoky Hollow people.
Hoping that you were, that was great. And consist, then like working on consistency from one plan to the other, how they move together.
Well, thank you all for your public input. That's been fantastic. We really enjoyed it. Um, all right, next is our reporter from our community development director.
Nothing other than we won't see you till December, so have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
Same to you.
And I know we talked about this last time. We have a, a special meeting on December the 13th?
December 15th.
15th.
Yeah.
Okay, a reporter from City Attorney's Office?
Nothing in this time, thank you.
Planning Commissioner comments?
I wanted to say congratulations to, uh, Ryan, well, do you know, is it too early? Is it, uh?
I have no idea.
Okay, all right.
But thank you.
Well, you guys, you guys, both Michelle and Ryan had a wonderful campaign. And so thank you guys for running for city council and, uh, best of luck to both of you wherever you may end up. I, they, they sort of published it in the Herald this morning, sort of.
They did, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
They did, thank you.
Very, very well-written campaigns.